Good evening and welcome to the closed session portion of the April 28th, 2020 Newport Beach City Council Meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Hurdman?
Here.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Muldoon, he is here. He just stepped away for a second. Councilmember Brenner?
Here.
Councilmember Duffield?
Here.
Mayor Protam Avery?
Here.
And Mayor O'Neil.
There as well. All right, do we have any public comments on, um, on this agenda? Okay, all right, go ahead. Hi, if you're on the phone, go ahead. Are you there? Hi, can you hear me? Hi, if you're on the phone, go ahead.
Hi, thank you so much for taking my call. I tried to call for like three hours. My name's Valerie Johnson. I have loved surfing and body boarding in Newport Beach for over forty years. I also was a photography teacher for many years and I think I can answer why the chief of police's photograph was so different than the one that was in the register and caught Governor Newsom's attention. If you use a telephoto lens at eye level looking across the beach, it compresses the space between people, making it look much more crowded than it really is. And the only really accurate view is that aerial view. You can make a miles worth of telephone poles look like they're right on top of each other with a telephoto lens. The other thing, I was following your meeting with interest. I like the idea of having it open for active recreation. Surfing, body boarding, running, walking, and prohibiting beach chairs, coolers, and umbrellas wouldn't be that hard to do. I also would urge you to open the parking and open the bathroom so that residents don't have the problems they've been having. Instead of funneling people into looking, driving up and down.
I just want to tell you, we appreciate these comments. We've taken the vote, but we, so.
Oh, I know, but I know you're still looking at maybe doing the active only for a later date.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I wanted to say one other thing, and that is that in central California, people are kept off the beaches when the elephant seals are there, but they do enforce that you can walk across the sand to surf or kite surf, and they seem not to have too much problem with that.
All right, thank you ma'am.
Thank you so much. Bye bye.
All right, we'll go to the next caller. Okay, go ahead.
Hello.
Hi, yes, can I?
I would encourage all these people who want Newport Beach to, um, be on quarantine or shut off the beaches to support the local businesses and order takeout delivered to their house or curbside. And quit bitching about it and make things happen.
Which, uh, own a restaurant?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay.
I'm a patron of a lot of restaurants on the peninsula. And I've had my neighborhood invaded, but I'm cool with it because I can manage, but, uh, and I'm in favor of rotating and no beach going or just walk or swim or surf. And maybe limit surfing just to local residents or surrounding citizens of Newport Beach, Huntington Beach, Laguna Beach, Irvine, Costa Mesa, and maybe Westminster, and I think we're gonna be cool.
Thanks guys, love you. Okay, oh, all right, uh, next caller please. All right, go ahead. Hi, if you're on the phone, go ahead.
Hi, long time listener, first time caller here. Lifelong resident of Corona del Mar. Kind of related to the beach closing. I'm kind of disappointed by how that vote turned out, but I just wanted to suggest that we enforce people wearing masks or some kind of face covering at the beach if we are going to allow it to be open. We live down over in that Corona del Mar and just walking around Big Corona and Crystal Cove, there's a bunch of people there. It's to be expected, nice weather, warm weekend. But what really disappoints me is that none of these people have face masks on. So even if they're six feet apart, one person coughs, one person sneezes, they spread it to everyone else around them in addition to not practicing social distancing. So I don't know if this can be tied in to the beach closure, but I just wanted to put that out there. Also, this is Brenner. My mom loves you. Thanks.
Okay, all right, uh, next speaker please. I think this is the last one. All right, all right, go ahead.
Hi, I'm a resident, I'm a resident in Newport Beach and I just wanted to know, um, if you guys are going to regulate parking.
Which, where, where?
So I'm a resident of Newport Beach and I know there were a lot of cars. So I was just wondering if you guys were going to regulate.
Got it. All right, well, I appreciate your comment. Um, I'll answer that in just a second. And then I think that was last caller. Okay. Uh, so the answer to that is I would just recommend going to our city website where we are not enforcing it. It's on our city website. Specifically NewportBeachCA.gov slash COVID-19. Uh, take a look there. It, uh, has all the parking information on that front. Okay. Uh, so we're right at seven o'clock, Mr. Harp. Should I, should we just move this, um, either to the back end or the next, the next meeting?
Yeah, we could do that. We could move it to, uh, after the council meeting and, um, may just take a quick break for everyone.
Yeah, why don't we do that? So we'll start the, uh, regular city council meeting at 7:05. We stand adjourned.
We're ready, Mayor.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much, uh, for coming back. April 28th, 2020, um, regular session. So we'll start with, uh, roll call please.
Councilmember Hurdman?
Sorry, here.
Councilmember Dixon?
She's here.
I see her, yes. Councilmember Muldoon? Councilmember Brenner?
Here.
Councilmember Duffield?
Here.
Mayor Protam Avery?
Here.
And Mayor O'Neil.
So those of you who are, you know, we've started a little bit late, my apologies. Uh, we had a special meeting that lasted quite some time, and so we needed just a little bit of a. Loud. Sorry. There you go, thank you. All right, so, um, with that, we, uh, had to take a break between go, going to, before going to closed session, so we haven't had a closed session for quite yet. I've asked Mr. Avery to handle our invocation and then, um, let's see, let's just go with, how about Ms. Brenner? Would you like to do the, uh, pledge of allegiance?
Sure.
All right, Mr. Avery.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, may we be grateful for our lives and compassionate toward all those who are suffering every kind of distress at this difficult time. May we hold back nothing and hasten to be the ministers of prayer and mercy like the disciples of him who went about doing good in times of need. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Can you hear me?
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that sterling start, let's, uh.
You guys weren't talking, you guys were not speaking loudly enough.
No, 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 it's okay.
That was awesome, Joy.
All right, okay, uh, notice to the public.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Right. So, uh, go into city council announcements and oral reports from city council on committee activities. There's not a lot, but we'll go anyway. Mr. Hurdman?
I, um, no, I really don't have anything. We've had a couple of, uh, short-term lodging subcommittee meetings that, uh, we've done over the phone uh, in preparation for presenting the ordinance eventually to the city council, the amendments to the current ordinance. And we had one. No, we didn't. It was canceled. And that's it. That's it for me.
Okay. Hi, Mr. Muldoon.
Uh, spent a lot of time at home with my family and, um, obviously the highlight of getting out is the council meetings. Uh, nothing really to report except, uh, in my neighborhood in East Bluff, um, a lot of people are, uh, getting out more often and they're practicing considered social distancing. And, um, uh, I think, uh, they are, they are ready to, um, you know, to slowly get back to business. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dixon? I'm sorry, you're on mute.
Oh, hold on one moment.
One announcement, uh, for the community that this is a period until May 6th, the city clerk can confirm that for me, that the applications are being accepted for residents who would like to serve on the council-appointed committees and commissions uh, every year at this time, and the turnover is for the terms that are expiring are open at the end of June, the end of the fiscal year. So if the city clerk, I think I got the date right. Is it May 6th?
You are correct.
Okay, so the applications are due May 6th. Normally, we have a little forum in our community room to, that the city clerk talks about community service. I talk about community service, so let me just give a plug for community service. You get to have city council meetings that last for about six or seven hours. But, um, serving on our boards and commissions like the arts and library and finance and, well, that's a different type. What a harbor commission, parks, beaches, and recreation. It's a wonderful opportunity to serve our city and please go to the city clerk's website. Leilani, if you want to give that website address where people can, uh, seek the application, download the application and fill it in and get it in by May 6th. I want to give you, uh, email address, please.
NewportBeachCA.gov slash vacancy.
Very good. So thank you and everyone who's listening. If you haven't served on that committee, uh, please consider it a great opportunity to serve your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brenner?
Um, yes, so, uh, in addition to the short-term lodging meetings, we've had a waste recycling meeting with, uh, uh, Mayor O'Neil and Councilwoman Dixon. And I just wanted to say that this committee is so extraordinary with the consultants and the staff. We've been meeting for, well, since I've been on council. And the work that has gone into the, um, whole topic as far as, as, um, looking at contracts with waste haulers and the city contracts and everything, it's really amazing and you'll be hearing a lot more about that, but it's very impressive. As is the finance committee. We also have a finance committee with the same three of us and we have some challenges on our hands. I'll just leave it at that. Um, I also met with the Historic Preservation Committee, which is part of the CDMRA, and they're looking at preserving the history of cottages in Corona del Mar, and they're doing a great job. I passed out masks at Oasis, which was the most fun I've had in five weeks. That was great. We did almost two thousand masks in about an hour and fifteen minutes. I also did a Zoom, uh, Will and I did a Zoom meeting with the CDMRA Board of Directors. It went pretty well. That was surprisingly easy. And, um, I also did a Zoom meeting with two students from Sage Hill who are really interested in finding a way for us to get all the students in Newport Beach involved in government and find a way for them to work together. So we're looking at some possible proposals for that. And Leilani, can you put up my, my slides?
Someone at the staff computer, if you can assist, thank you.
The first set is how I've spent most of my time over the last five.
Joy, hold, hold on, someone needs to, um, bring that up, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave.
Well, I'll set the stage. The first one is how I've spent most of my time in my district the last five. And the second set of slides that, um, I want to show you is a representation of how our students are handling this pandemic and, um, some of the street art that we are seeing. And I'm really proud of the way our kids are handling this. My, my grandchildren and the people I know are doing a remarkable job of studying and, okay, these are the slides that, um, I wanted you to see of Ocean Boulevard and why I was so intent on trying to protect our residents. We can go past those to, can you get to the second set of slides? As you can see, it's not primarily the beach that I'm showing you slides of. It's the surrounding area. The next set of slides though is, is what I really wanted to show you at this point.
Joy, I think those are the only photos we have right now.
Okay, if you didn't get the other ones. Anyway, it's the street art that our kids are putting out and our kids are putting out a stronger together message. They're putting about Newport pride. They're putting messages on the sidewalk. When Duffy and I were growing up here, the messages that we saw on sidewalks was predominantly tourists go home. And, um, now we're seeing really positive uplifting messages from our kids on the sidewalk, and I think it speaks well for the kids that we're raising. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Duffield?
All right, thank you. Um, I don't have much. Obviously, I've been hunkered down here at home in our, my community, but, uh, I will say we, uh, in the background have been working on harbor issues and speaking with our, uh, city manager and our harbor master, Kirk Orstein, and we we feel like we've done, I, I feel like the staff and everybody has done a great job so far, so, um, just keep my fingers crossed and keep working on keeping the harbor moving and keeping it, um, safe for everyone and, uh, I think that's a good report, so, but sadly, um, obviously there's not a lot of committee meetings going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Avery?
I had a couple of meetings in the street where I live on either end of Holly Lane. One end is Irvine Avenue and the other end is Tustin. I, uh, uh, and it, and, uh, we had a couple of things happen that were interesting. We had our utilities crew out there repairing a water main issue at, um, at a valve, and it was quite involved. And, uh, there were about six, it seemed like about six trucks and about ten guys, and they were doing a very kind of tight deal right on a corner with traffic going by down Tustin on the Holly, and I stopped my old pickup truck and had a chat with them, and they were, uh, they were great, and they just, uh, total pro deal. They had to return a couple of times. Uh, they notified all the residents of water shut off, repaired the street perfectly. And, uh, at the other end of the street, we had the public works crew, uh, connecting really important links, connecting, um, Laurel and Holly Lane with Sidewalk, connecting Holly Lane and Margaret with Sidewalk and beyond, and linking it all together now. So students, when they do go back to school, will be able to, uh, stay on the sidewalk all the way down Irvine Avenue for that section, which I think is really important. And that crew, the same thing, they're working on a busy street on the corners, out in traffic, managing it, and, uh, did a really nice job. They had to shore up a neighbor's wall and make all that work. And, uh, so I think just for me, it just reminded me of what great teams we have in this city keeping, uh, keeping our infrastructure together and adding value for homeowners and, uh, doing, doing great stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I've been doing a, I've been having a lot of TCA board meetings, uh, and subcommittee meetings, but they've been focused quite a bit on the, uh, fiscal state that we find ourselves in, so. With that, uh, I'm going to, I'm going to tell you that because of the way that the special meeting went, I'm going to be withdrawing my A1. So we'll go into, uh, the public comments on consent calendar item. Madam Clerk?
This is a time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items one through eight. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar item. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
All right, council, do you have anything to pull or from Mr. Hurdman?
No.
All right, uh, Mr. Muldoon?
Uh, one second, ma'am. None, uh, none, thank you, but I'd like to, uh, lodge a no vote on item 11.
Uh, so item 11 is not part of consent.
That's right. Public area, thank you, sir. None, ma'am.
Okay, problem. So, um, I'm sorry, Ms. Dixon? All right, go ahead.
No item, no items?
All right, Ms. Brenner?
None, thank you.
And Mr. Duffield? So, just say, just say this if you don't have anything to, oh, there you go. Okay, you're good. All right, Mr. Avery?
None.
All right, and I have none. So do we have a motion, Mr. Avery?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, I move the balance consent items, consent calendar items one through eight uh, with, uh, no items pulled, uh, no recusals. And, uh,
Oh, did I have to?
No amendments.
To item one, please. The minutes. Amendments to item one, Mayor Protam Avery?
Yes.
So.
Included into your motion.
With amendments to item one.
All right, and then do we have a second?
A second.
All right, second by Ms. Dixon, so.
I think that was Ms. Brenner.
I'm sorry.
It was the other woman.
All right, so, um, um, we'll go to public comments, so uh, we believe we do have public comment on this. Um, I apologize, just a moment. Okay, so we'll go to the, uh, really community room first.
As the motion indicated, we have eight items on the consent calendar. Number three is the introduction of an ordinance that has to do with businesses using public trash containers. Personally could see no reason why this ordinance is being introduced. The issue seems to be the use of public containers in Valvoline Village, and the actual action will be taken by a resolution that is coming to you later. It seems to me the resolution could be acted upon without changing the municipal code at all. Uh, so I'm wondering if this matter was reviewed by this mysterious solid waste recycling committee that we've heard about and whether they understand why this, uh, ordinance is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one call on hold, so we'll go to that call. Okay, go ahead on the. Oh, I'm sorry, you need to, you need to mute whatever you're watching us on, or you'll get back up.
Okay, can you just, can you just tell me, am I gonna be on the Zoom with the members?
Who is this?
Hi, my name is Whitney Gomez. I'm the president of the Board of Trustees at Herbert A. School, which is on the agenda, I believe, December 11th for tonight.
Uh, okay, so we need someone on staff to reach out, um, Ms. Gomez, so that we can make sure that, is she going to be on Zoom or are we going to have a call in? I'm gonna look at.
I prefer to be, I prefer to be on the phone, and I just wanted to thank the council for their consideration.
Okay, so we're gonna be considering item number 11, uh, immediately, and so if you have a chance to call back, that's great. If that's all you had to say, then.
So call back when it comes up.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, um, you bet. So, uh, we'll come back and I'll just respond real quickly to leave to Mr. Mosier's comment. Nope, this did not come through our ad hoc committee, and I have read this and I do understand what we're voting on. So, uh, with that, let's, um, do we have any discussion? All right, seeing none, I need to poll, so let's start.
Um, Mayor, I have to read the ordinance titles, so let me do those first before you take the poll.
I'm gonna eat it.
For item three, ordinance number 2020-13, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending section 6.04.170 of chapter 6.04 of title six of the Newport Beach Municipal Code pertaining to the commercial use of public solid waste recycle material or divertible material, containers, and bins. Ordinance number 2020-11, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach adopting zoning code amendment number CA 2019-008 to amend setback map S1A West Newport is set forth in section 20.80.040 setback maps of title 20, planning and zoning of the Newport Beach Municipal Code applicable to the property located at 6501 6503 Seashore Drive. And ordinance number 2020-12, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach adopting local coastal program amendment number LC 2019-007 to amend setback map S1A West Newport is set forth in section 21.80.040 setback maps, maps of title 21 Local Coastal Program Implementation Plan of the Newport Beach Municipal Code applicable to the property located at 6501 6503 Seashore Drive. I'm done. So, hold on.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor.
I've been telling people that all night. All right, I apologize. So, um, do we have any discussion on consent? I've seen none, I'm going to poll. Mr. Hurdman?
I vote in favor.
All right. Mr. Muldoon?
Hi.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
Ms. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Duffield? And need unmute. Duffy, can you do this?
Yes.
Okay, yes, okay. Uh, so I'm gonna take that as a yes on the vote. Mr. Avery?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. All right, so, uh, we will move now into public comments on non-agenda items. We have a couple of comments for public comments on non-agenda items, or I'm sorry, um, let's start with the, uh, community room first.
I wonder what happened tonight.
It all went crazy.
Oh, okay. I don't wanna be the bad guy.
Do we have any?
No one, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Do we have any calls? I guess not. Not seeing any. Okay, sorry, just a moment. No, okay. All right, um, sorry, I'm trying to transfer around and.
I think Jenny's calling, but.
Okay, I'm. Sorry, we do have one call. Go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, uh, Mayor O'Neil, City Council, uh, it's Scott Carpenter with I Trip A K. Okay, uh, it's Scott Carpenter with I Trip A K.
Okay, uh it's Scott Carpenter with I Trip Vacation, and first and foremost, I'd be remiss if I didn't I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can, go ahead, thank you.
Okay, uh Mayor O'Neil, uh City Council, it's Scott Carpenter, uh owner of I Trip Vacation, a short-term property management company in Newport Beach. Um I'd be remiss if I did not mention today, uh after listening and sitting through the meeting uh about the beach closures, um I think every one of you on the council should be commended for sitting through that, listening to everything, and we're fortunate to have everybody uh on the council with their leadership with that. The reason I wanted to comment is I know we're a few weeks away from May twelfth, in which we're going to reconsider short-term rentals in Newport Beach, and I thought it would be a good time to share just a couple of real cool pieces of data for each of you. Um there's a company out there called Key Data, and they basically uh collect a lot of information as it relates to short-term rentals, and as of today, their occupancy rate for Newport Beach was fourteen percent, and that was from April first projected all the way out until May the fifteenth, and I thought the council should note that at this point in time, a lot of the short-term operators are starting to see cancellations into June and July. So uh without question, the short-term rental business is definitely hurting quite a bit. Uh and it I was happy to hear that we didn't wave the heat cloud this weekend on the short-term rentals. And then the last thing I would leave you with, as it relates to reopening our businesses and getting, you know, kind of back to normal, if you will, um just realize that short-term rentals, you know, they over-index in terms of what they contribute to the local economy in terms of uh restaurants, in terms of using other items, in terms of using other amenities within our city. Um so I just, again, I just thought I would share with you, you know, the kind of the latest data, and just continue to press upon you that uh the business is definitely hurting, uh but all of us who are good operators are definitely following through on the ordinance and making sure things are working correctly. Again, thank you for everything this afternoon, uh good luck to everybody, thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh next uh next caller then. All right, go ahead on the phone.
Hi, um I'm a resident of Balboa Island, and um I speak for a lot of my neighbors, if you see next door, obviously, the negative, the positive, the everything. And we're just wondering when the boardwalk is going to reopen, and I just have like a couple of things to say about that. Number one is that I've seen children almost, children, people in general, almost getting run over in the street. Um it's not a place for people, it's a place for cars. And number two, the doggy bags, my neighbor has noticed that um there's been a lot of extra um I don't even know what to say, dog doo-doo, in the alleys and the streets, because people can't get to our boardwalks to get the bags that were complimentary. Um I'm personally not a dog owner, but we really, the one way was working perfectly, and we really want our boardwalks open. So I'm just wondering when and if that's going to be addressed tonight.
Um thank you, I'm I I'm not sure that it will be addressed tonight, but I appreciate you calling in. All right, next caller. All right, okay, go ahead on the phone.
Hello, my name is Charles Klob. Um three things, I'll try to be brief. Firstly, um quality of the audio and video was much better last week when the calls, when the meeting originated from the council chamber, where three of you were there and some staff members, and I hope you can go back to that, there's a great lag doing it the way you're doing, and I see that uh councilperson Brenner and Mayor O'Neil and councilperson um Muldoon are there, so they could be in the council chamber theoretically. Secondly, we're monitoring the school board meeting at the same time tonight, and one uh positive with this COVID thing is that we're able to monitor both of them via video conference, which we couldn't possibly be at both meetings, so that's thankful. And the Ensign Project has not come up for a vote yet. And thirdly, the um item we're about to hear next, uh the correspondence link on the agenda as of right now does not reflect what I know to be all of the comments that you have received electronically today. I believe that the council has access to them, even if the public is not able to um click at the link and see them now. Thank you.
All right, that was the last comment for public comments on non-agenda items. With that, we are going to move into item number nine. The uh the appeal of the Planning Commission approval for the office and parking structure proposed at two fifteen Riverside Avenue. We'll have a uh brief staff report, and we will open it up for uh the appellants to uh speak, and then the, I'm sorry, the applicant to speak, appellant to speak, and then a brief rebuttal from the applicant, and then um we will go into public comment. But I, is that correct, Mr. Harp? I just want to double check.
The only uh thing that needs to be changed is the applicant gets to speak after public comment. Remember, fully respond to all the comments.
Oh, so the uh so what I said is, so instead it would be um sorry, staff, applicant, appellant, then we would go to public comment, and then applicant gets to go again?
That's correct.
Sounds good. All right, uh staff presentation, please.
This is the um project at two fifteen Riverside. Um just from an aerial perspective there, you could see, hopefully you could see with my with my mouse, um where the project is located. Um you have residents to the north, um Cliff Drive Park to the west, it's at the corner of Avon and Riverside. Let me just move the uh, there we go. You have the Garden Shopping Center across the street. Give it a moment while the system catches up. Not moving forward. I need to advance the slide. Sorry, give us a second while we let the system catch up. It's going.
Oh, that kind of caught up and sends them for you.
All right. So if you can still hear me, I'll continue here. This is just a top-down view of the site, this is the actual, um it's a two-story parking structure with a combined office building. Here is the front row parking, and here is the back row parking. You can see in the front row where we have, where the applicant has extended the front trellis, and you can see here, there's there's no trellis on this imagery here right now. And again, this is looking at the top roof deck of the parking structure. This is a two-story structure, a two-story office building. Parking structure can uh accommodate forty-one parking spaces. Here's just a a side view, elevation view, from a kind of really a perspective of the residents from above. You can see how the the project kind of sits a little lower. This is the um, this is the lower level for the um parking structure. You can see you're you're able to um enter off Avon here, um and then the entrance off Cliff Drive goes on to the the top deck, so this is the lower deck here. Again, another uh roof elevation view, a roof uh site plan view. Here's an elevation view, really trying to just highlight that it's a it's a two-story building, two-story parking structure with a two-story office building. And that's the total height is twenty-eight feet, three inches. Here's a nice color rendering, again, just really kind of highlighting the trellis that's proposed at the front. Again, it's a two-story structure, two-story parking structure with a two-story office building. So the Planning Commission did hear the item and voted to approve it six to one, they did add a number of different conditions. The uh the reason why we're here before the city council is that the item was appealed by the residents above, um and we call those the appellants, and this is the reasoning, eight reasons why they appealed the item to the city council. So I just want to briefly go through and just uh just quickly address each one of the reasons why they've appealed. They've um appealed it based on it, they allege inadequate public notice. Um we've gone back and reviewed the public notice thing with regards to title twenty and twenty-one. Um we've got our 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 conclusion is that we've properly noticed it. Um inadequate traffic analysis, and again, this was, we did have a traffic analysis done, we did look at the proposed um trips. One thing to remember for parking structures, even though cars come in and out of a parking structure, those are not accounted as trips as we would traditionally look at trips. Parking, when you go to a parking lot, it's not trips. Geotactical issues were raised, um they have a geo uh geotactical engineer, they did some preliminary preliminary analysis. Um when the, if the project is ever approved, if the project is ever submitted for plan review, we do have an in-house um city geotactical engineer that will review the studies. We've determined that the project, the their applicant, their engineer, determined that the project is feasible, and we concur. Um the prod, the project has lighting impacts, and we looked at that, and we're gonna request a photometric study uh before we permit the, before we permit the project, and we will be able to determine the lighting impacts through a photometric study. Um the noise study, um the noise impacts, um the original condition that there was no um access uh that the Planning Commission posed um to the top roof deck after eleven PM. So that that would reduce the noise impact, and we did review it with regards to our um municipal code. A noise study was conducted, and it was determined that it meets our municipal code with regards to noise. The other um issue was that it was not consistent with the general plan. We've gone through back our general plan, and it is consistent with our general commercial land use designations and also our zoning code, so we do believe it is compliant with our general plan. There's a big issue with regards to CEQA class thirty-two exemption, and so you can see those four points there. That it has to comply with our general plan, which it does, it has to less than five acres, which it is. The project cannot impact um sensitive habitats, so there's no sensitive habitat on this property for this project, and we've determined there's no impact to noise, traffic, air quality, or water quality issues. Uh we've done a uh a lot of analysis, we did have, we do have a biologist that we've used, uh we've done tr- uh traffic analysis, we've done a noise study and W P M P. We've done a lot of studies on this project, and we've determined that there's no impact. A big issue from the appellant side was the whole argument of CEQA piecemealing. You know, we've all been trained from a, from the city staff, um from consultants, is that you don't separate projects and do the environmental review on a piece-by-piece basis, um and that that's always been ingrained to us. But there are exceptions, and in this particular case, there is an exception to allow this project to go forward um without including the future restaurant that this property owner has also submitted as a separate application. That application has not been deemed complete, we're still reviewing that application. But whether the rest, future restaurant gets approved or not approved, this project meets all the code requirements to stand on its own. Hence, we've determined that from a staff standpoint, and in the Planning Commission also concurred with their approval, that this is not a CEQA piecemealing issue. So it complies with CEQA. Uh most recently, there's been issues and discussions with regards to an oak tree on the adjacent property. Great, what was the address of that property?
I believe it's twenty-nine eleven.
Twenty-nine eleven Cliff Drive, which is an an oak tree. Um the project does not impact that oak tree, and it says that when, if they were to develop this project site, that that oak tree will not be demolished, it will stay intact. There has been um some correspondence with regards to the roots being damaged or the roots being affected. Um typically, the roots go out as far as the overhang of the top canopy, um and we've added some conditions, really to protect that oak tree, and we don't want to see that oak tree gone either, so we do have a condition that that we'll show you here in a moment. And it froze. Give us a second, the PowerPoint is catching up, we're almost done here. Sorry, we're the the, it's a large file, so we're we're anticipating that it's gonna catch up here in a moment. Thank you. Thank you for everybody's patience. There we go. All right, here we go. So um just to address what we understand between uh Mr. Mayor, the applicant, and appellant, um the the city council continued this item till tonight, um so that both sides can kind of work out um some of their issues. Our understanding is that the appellant has not agreed to any of the modified conditions, even though they've been discussing those conditions. The applicant has um agreed to the conditions that we're gonna share with the council this evening. So one of the conditions here is that, as we talked about, the trellis on the top deck, it was proposed, originally proposed on one side of the, one side of the parking structure. It is now, the applicant has pre- uh agreed to have the trellis on both sides of the parking structure, and I I will show you here in a quick moment if it did catch up. There we go. So you see one side of the parking structure is a trellis, the applicant has agreed to put a trellis on the other side and to to add foliage on top of the trellis. The applicant has not agreed to cover the open deck here area, um probably mainly to do with structural issues and traffic vehicles, cars, um maybe um hitting the columns that would support the overhang. The overhang will be, is proposed to be here, and the condition is to add an overhang on this side also. And I'm gonna advance to the next slide. The Planning Commission approved that the exterior lighting will be limited to eleven PM, the applicant has agreed to change that to ten, but add an additional fifteen minutes to um ten fifteen, in the sense that the top deck would be closed off at ten PM. The lights will go out at um at ten fifteen, so allow fifteen minutes for people to exit the parking structure, and that'll be proposed for seven days a week. I'm gonna advance to the next slide here, there we go. As we talked about, the top-level deck will be closed at ten PM. I believe the applicant wanted both the bottom level, I'm sorry, the appellant asked that both the bottom level, the first floor and the top deck be closed at ten, and the applicants have not, the applicant did not agree to it, but the applicant will agree to close the top roof deck at ten PM. So, you know, a lot of concern about landscape and about affecting some of the um city trees or adjacent trees. As a condition here that we've added, um prior to any demolition permits being issued or grading permit issued, our city arborist will review the construction documents and the landscape plan to ensure no, no um, no trees that are protected are affected. And in in addition, um prior to the issue of the grading permit, the project developer, whoever's gonna build it, needs to have an arborist on staff to review, to make sure that that oak tree is not affected. And we're almost done trying to advance the slide here. We're up again, oh, there we go. So here here's our um recommendations, uh Mr. Mayor, conduct the public hearing and um consider this item, and we have drafted a revised resolution, a revised conditions for the city council that was emailed to you by the city clerk this evening. Those conditions I just went through um have been revised and um for your consideration, and we're happy to answer questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, uh I'm gonna, because I can't see everyone at the moment, I'm just gonna go down the line and ask if anyone has any questions. Um Mr. Hurdman, do you have any questions? Mr. Hurdman, do you have any questions? Sorry, you might be on mute.
Well, no, I don't have any questions.
Okay, all right. Actually, you know what? I can see everyone now. If you have a question, put your hand up for me. All right, I've got Ms. Brenner and Ms. Dixon. Okay, we'll go with Ms. Brenner first.
Yes, my question is for Simone about the precedent of us having a parking structure near residences that does not have a cover on that. My understanding is that in the past, the city council has not approved that, and the project at the corner of Dover and P C H, that the council made them cover that because that was not a precedent they wanted to set. Is that true?
You are correct that the project at Dover and P C H is covered. I'm not exactly sure if that was the, to set a precedent to cover parking structures. We do have a park, and I think Councilmember Brenner, you and I spoke, there was a parking structure next to the colonies in Newport Center that has an open deck. That is open and adjacent to the colonies. But again, colonies is a different type of a residential product. And the one at Dover and P C H is the only one I do recall that's similar to single-family.
Okay, well, we have a comment. And is the 10:00 PM closing on the upper deck included in our new resolution that you sent us?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right, that's all for right now.
Okay.
Yes, I just, to clarify with Simone, what are the points of difference between the applicant and the appellant? Where are we now? Is it, I'm on, well, I have a list. So is the trellis, the appellant would like the entire upper surface covered by a trellis, is that correct?
That is correct. That's one item. My understanding, the second item, is that they would like the entire structure closed at 10:00 PM. So that includes the ground floor as well as the top floor. And then they would not, they don't want to allow any motorcycles in the parking structure. And that's really hard for us to condition and enforce.
Why is that?
Because really, it's going to be after the fact for us by the time anybody goes out there to do any type of code enforcement or, you know, and it's a private structure too. You know, our police wouldn't go out there to do a parking ticket per se.
Do we, anywhere in any project, would we, we make some kind of a conditional use? You can't drive certain types of cars or motorcycles?
We've never done something like that before. We've never conditioned the type of vehicle inside a parking structure.
Okay, and back to the covered next to a residential, is that in our code? Is there any prohibition in our code that says you cannot, you must cover parking structure upper decks next to a residential property? Is that in our code?
No, it's not in our, it's not in our code. It is either done on a voluntary basis, and, you know, at the same time, probably the planning commission can condition it if they thought it warranted. But what, from a staff standpoint, you know, we did the noise study on it, and it didn't trigger any requirement to do any additional mitigation measures or any additional conditions. Hence, it never came up.
Is this for aesthetic purposes or noise? It was for noise mitigation? To propose the entire upper level to be covered?
You know, you may want to ask the appellant on that, on that issue. I'm not entirely sure why they wanted the entire deck.
Okay, so back to my original question. Those are the, there are three points of difference.
That's correct. That's my understanding.
Okay. But on all the other points, they came together and resolved their differences, and the applicant made a number of concessions, is that correct?
My understanding is that the appellant is not agreeing to any of these concessions because they're still holding out for those three additional ones. So I can't, I'm not going to speak for them. They'll have to address their question.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Avery. Oh, I'm sorry, Brad, I had to unmute first. Okay.
This is a really tough one, but just, I'd like to just, for everybody's sake, how did this come about in terms of the land use? Obviously, we've got residents very close to a commercial building there, right? And that's just the way the lots work and the zoning works?
That's correct. They're meeting the land use of our general plan, and they're meeting our zoning requirements of our zoning code.
Right, and it's just unfortunate that the two are so close together.
Correct.
We've got R1 properties that were built above it. That building was built first, correct? It was commercial, and it had a parking?
I'm turning to Greg Ramirez. Do you know the sequence?
I do not. I know the building is quite old, and the residences are quite old as well. But I think the interface, you know, has been there for decades, the commercial residence.
Right. We're not sure of the date of the construction of either the residence or the existing office building, but that interface between the two has been there for quite a long time.
Right, and then the office building always had sort of rooftop parking, but parking behind it, right? Open parking behind it. Or do you recall, approximately, how many cars were back there?
Greg, do we know how many spaces? There's. There's probably less than 20 parking spaces back there.
Right, right. So, and the height is all in compliance, right?
Height's compliance too. It meets all the zoning design requirements.
Yeah, so, all right, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, seen that, and we'll go to the applicant first.
Good evening. Thanks, Simone, for that very concise staff report. Mayor O'Neil, members of the council. My name is Scott Laidlaw from Laidlaw Schultz Architects. I'm both the architect and the applicant for this project. And I want to jump in and answer a couple of the questions really quickly. As Simone pointed out, everything we're proposing conforms to the general plan. I do think it would, it's important for you to understand that there's an 8,000-square-foot commercial building on site now that was built in the '60s, and we're reducing the size of the commercial use down to 2,750 square feet. So there's a significant reduction in intensity, mass, scale. The homes, the appellant could probably give you the actual date, but the homes were built in the '80s. So the commercial building predates the residents above by a significant number of years. The other thing that's been brought out is the height of the structure. It is not just conforming, but well below the allowable height. And that was one of the concessions that we made at the request of the appellants to have the proposed office building be no higher than the existing building that's currently on site. We agreed and revised our design accordingly. The other thing I'd like to clarify is that there are, there is existing parking on site behind the existing commercial building. There are 16 spaces, and 50% of those spaces are actually further up in grade height than what we're proposing, meaning they're closer to the residences by eight feet than what we're proposing. We're dropping the height of the parking overall. And I take issue with the description of the parking being a two-story parking structure. We drive down a foot and a half to the lower level. Our parking, upper-level parking deck, second level, is eight feet above the curb, the sidewalk, with a 42-inch guardrail, so it's in a 13-foot height range. The only thing that gets taller than that is the trellis structure, which is being provided, again, to help sort of screen the parked cars from above. But if you look at the, if you look at, you know, the rendering here, you can see that a two-story building is what you see at the corner, and the parking structure is significantly lower. So yes, there are two levels of parking, but I would argue it's a one-story structure. So, and a couple of other things about, you know, the, we're reducing site coverage significantly, and what we're doing with a lot of that reduction in site coverage is providing additional landscaping, which you'll see later on in some sections, also further help to screen the upper-level parking. We believe it's, the idea of adding parking is consistent with the Mariner Mile Strategic Plan Design Framework, which talks about implementing comprehensive parking strategies, including and encouraging aggregate parking. So while we're parking more than the minimum space is required for the office building, we believe it's consistent. And we also believe that this project can be viewed more like a mixed-use structure. It's a combination of parking and office space. It's not a parking structure or just an office building. I talked about the maximum height being just over 28 feet, where 32 is permitted. And as Simone pointed out, we've agreed to extend, per the planning commission's requirements, extend the trellis over the front parking. And we'll see later on how we're proposing to extend the trellis over the rear line of parking. It should be noted that the noise studies that were done, were done prior to any addition of trellis work that is being proposed tonight. The noise studies were done prior to us removing all the rooftop air conditioning units in order to bring the height of the building down and locate those air conditioning units in the lower-level parking. And so I believe that the noise study that was done without those changes met all the city's standards, Simone pointed out. But we're going to far exceed those standards with these other mitigation measures that we put in place. So as noted, the trellis on the upper level has been extended to the rear line of cars. It's, we've revised our landscape plan to show how we can completely cover the trellis and vines and foliage with really the intention of screening view of the cars and also providing something really pleasant to look down upon. Simone went through the time, the timing, and our willingness to have a city arborist review our plans and to have an arborist on-site during construction. We believe that this project actually is a huge improvement over what is there. We believe the aesthetics are much, much higher than the current situation, the materials and the quality. There's a tremendous amount of community support for this project. And we think that the demolition of the existing structure and even the increase of the parking supply are significant benefits. Without propping myself up too much, I think you'd be hard-pressed to find a better-looking parking facility in the city of Newport Beach. This slide just shows you that, just to point out, that significant, the westernmost side of the current parking situation, so here you can see the upper-level parking, and you can see on the right-hand side of the image the lower-level parking. And we're taking everything down to that lower level. See of the three arrows, the arrow in the middle, all of the parking stays down at that level. And we're also removing all of the encroachments in the city parkland, which the retaining walls you see on the left-hand side of the image constitute. And then rehabilitating those slopes. And of course, we'll make sure that all the city parkland trees are maintained during that effort. And, you know, the result of the biologic study that was, that was done, and I quote, says, "The proposed development has no potential adversity, adverse effect on Avon Street wetlands." So in fact, we're moving our development further away from the existing wetland, Avon Street. This is just the before and after, which I think helps you see the significant kind of reduction in overall mass and scale of the structure and improvements. And we think that the structure actually nestles into the hillside nicely. We still hold the corner with the building, which is sort of good architecture. But the structure itself behind the office is sort of cut into the hillside to completely minimize its impact. You can, you can see here that the one, that our proposed building is no higher than the existing, the red dashed line is the existing building. And you can see the red cars are the existing height of parking, and our black cars are the proposed height of our parking. So we're bringing the cars away from the adjacent residences and dropping them down lower. And in that space that we create between our new retaining wall and the existing retaining wall, we're backfilling that and landscaping that. So you can see how that proposed landscaping will provide significant screening of views down from the residents above to the proposed upper-level parking. Here you see a view, four view from, this is the, this is the third house, or a house in the middle, I'll call it, of the four houses up above. And you see the gray building with the white long horizontal windows. That's the existing, existing structure. And you can see that, you really now see all the way across the street to buildings on the other side of Avon, and our proposed structure is essentially not visible. I went through some of the numbers early, but we're significantly increasing landscaping on the site overall and along the street. And so we think that's a, that's a significant community benefit. You can see this site plan is the plan that was, that it was approved by the planning commission with the condition of the front trellis extended, and you see that extension here. You see images of that planning commission-approved condition. Additional street landscaping was part of the condition and the extension of the trellis. And we now are proposing that the trellis be extended over the rear parking, and the next slide I think is a better example. So here you see that same Avon Street elevation with the foliated trellis along the Avon. And behind that, just stepped up slightly, because we're, this is a bird's-eye view. You see the trellis is proposed over the rear line of cars. There's a site plan there, a landscape plan, where you can see the trellis now running upon both long sides of the upper-level parking. upon both long sides of the upper-level parking. And there's just a close-up detail there, so you understand that it's not a, you know, a two-by-two wood, you know, flimsy lattice work. This is a, a kind of steel post and beam with heavy timber, wood members, and planters integrated into the overall design to support the propagation of foliage and vines. The, the, the upper-level parking actually is a significant improvement over what's there. The, the ramps have all been reduced to meet current city standards. The existing ramps, as I saw on that previous slide, were very, very steep. The, the exit onto Riverside has been moved down Riverside, which significantly improved sightlines, which was some comments that we got from the community as we started out on the project, so that now you have a very narrow exit onto Riverside for those 16 cars. And now our 20 cars on the upper level are literally moved about 20 feet further down Riverside with open space, so the sightlines are significantly improved. And of course, the sightlines were studied and reviewed and approved by the Public Works Department of the City. This is just showing you the kind of diagram of, of the sightlines that they, they reviewed. And finally, I'm just gonna, just do a, a quick addition to the discussion about the oak tree. We went out and did some fieldwork and established the location of that oak tree you see in the subtle aerial view. The existing oak tree canopy kind of outlined in red. One of the things that's maybe not clear, but our lower-level parking does not extend all the way to Riverside. It doesn't extend underneath the ramp, because there isn't headroom to do that. So the lower-level parking is, is pulled back from Riverside by about 25 feet. So that shaded area designates the lower-level parking. And I went out personally and field-measured the location of that tree and verified that using Google Maps, that's a great measuring tool. And the, the appellant's arborist actually recommend that the, that, that, in, any improvements be a minimum of 35 feet away from the trunk of the tree. And you can see on that small site plan, that I think Simone's photo is kind of over that, but there's a site plan there, and our proposed, our proposed improvements exceed 40 feet from the existing tree and obviously are clear of the drip line. And I think it's also, you have to be careful, these are, this is an urban California oak, so we've had our landscape consultant, an expert, look at this, and it said, you know, the root system is there to, to go out and grab water, but this is an irrigated situation, and so the trees generally don't go down and underneath existing retaining walls. And the whole perimeter of, of our site now is lined with a retaining wall along the property line. So the chances of those roots being in that location are, are remote. Again, we've, we've conceded to having an arborist involved to make sure that nothing could possibly harm that tree. And with that, I'm gonna have Susan Horry come in and talk about some of the...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Susan Horry, counsel for the applicant on the 215 project. And I will try to be brief, but I think that there are a number of points that I would like to make with respect to the SEQA analysis that the city has conducted, as well as their analysis of the project's consistency with the general plan and zoning and the local coastal program. I think that Scott has taken you through the project, and it's been very informative in looking at the slides, as you can see that this is really an urban infill project. This site has already been developed with an, an office building and a parking lot at a, in a lot that is actually closer to the project, to the, the adjacent residences than our project will provide. And today, we were informed right before the hearing that the, a document of about 50 pages, which includes an arborist's report and a SEQA analysis, was prepared, and I, I wanted to take the opportunity, hope you indulge me for about five minutes while I, I address that. I think it's unfortunate that much of what was included in that 50 pages of analysis, including the arborist's report, really was based upon an inaccurate set of facts and information about the project. And I'd like to take this opportunity to, to correct the, some of the inaccurate statements, both of the facts regarding this project, as well as the statements of law. The document that was submitted, as well as, which basically mirrors many of the arguments that was raised by the appellant in their appeal document, concerns whether or not this project qualifies for a categorical exemption under SEQA. The categorical exemption that the city has identified as being appropriate is, is cover urban infill development. And the urban infill exemption applies if the project falls within the four corners of the exemption, which this project does. None of the exceptions to the exemption apply, and the burden is on the appellant to show definitively, not just raise potential arguments, but they must show definitively that the, that the project does not qualify for use of the exemption, and we do not believe that they have done so. First of all, in terms of the project's consistency with the general plan and all of the applicable policies, your staff's staff report did an excellent job in reviewing the general plan and local coastal program policies, and we addressed those in our letters to you of April 8th. So I will not go into detail regarding them, but I did want to identify some of the policies that they have raised with respect to characterizing the surrounding area as a coastal block and the amount of cutting into the area that was stated in Mr. Tanner's consistency analysis. He was talking about the fact that over 14,000 feet of the bluff face would be impacted. As Scott Laidlaw did in his presentation, the, everything that we are doing, with the exception of about 25 feet, 25 square feet of grading, is going to be within the existing confines of the already developed area, including within the existing retaining walls. We are pulling back development from the wetlands and creating a larger buffer between development and the wetlands. We're restoring the bluff face area from, from where the existing retaining wall is located. And so I think we have to always remember that this is an already-developed site, which we are making better in terms of providing additional buffering and landscaping, as well as protective measures in terms of avoiding light spillage. I think you saw the, the trellis that we had offered to extend over all of the open parking spaces to minimize light spillage. So, as said, that was the first criteria. Is the bridge consistent with applicable general plan policies and zoning? Yes, it is. In fact, as Scott mentioned, you know, the development standards would have allowed a much higher building, and we've lowered it to make sure that whatever is existing, that the new building will be consistent with what is currently existing there. Second question is whether or not the project has value as habitat for endangered, rare or threatened species. The project site is already, again, developed. Yes, there is a wetland adjacent to the project site, but we are not touching that wetland, and we're increasing our buffer. Yes, there is an oak tree on the neighbor's property, but we are not going to be impacting that oak tree. In fact, one of the things that we saw in the arborist's report was a mistaken assumption that we were going to be cutting the roots and that the retaining wall for the project is within 15 feet of the tree trunk. As Scott mentioned, based upon his analysis and the measurements that he did out in the field, the figures that the arborists were operating under were simply mistaken, and we wanted to point that out to you in terms of much of the analysis that was submitted by the appellant and, and Mr. Tanner yesterday. Also, the project does not result in any significant effects regarding traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality. We have done extensive noise analysis, and as Scott mentioned, as a result of the increased extension of the buffer, the additional landscaping that we're providing, together with the fact that we've now taken the air conditioning units, which is like one of the noisiest things, and putting that into the lower level of the parking area, that's going to further reduce the noise than what was actually analyzed in the noise study. The noise study, that the project itself would not be generating any noise in excess of the city's daytime and nighttime standards. Now, there are exceptions to use of a categorical exemption, and that's if the project would impact resources within a scenic highway. The project can be seen from Pacific Coast Highway, but it really doesn't have any impact on those scenic resources. The second question is whether or not there, the project has any aspect of the project that is unusual and not typical of other projects, what we call the unusual circumstances exception. And so the question is just not whether or not there are unusual circumstances, the question is, is there an activity or aspect of the project that is unusual and not typical of other projects that fall within the infill exemption? Frankly, we don't see where there are any unusual circumstances. They've infill development replacing an already-developed area with a project that is actually smaller than what is currently existing and provides greater buffering. And also with respect to any of the oak trees, or the adjacent, on the adjacent property in the wetlands, as I mentioned, we provide more than the current conditions would come back. Also, and only if there are unusual circumstances, do we even go to the second question, which is whether or not those unusual circumstances result in an impact. Because we can't even go there, because there are no unusual circumstances, the analysis that was submitted by Mr. Tanner simply is inapplicable. Again, I won't go into detail, but there are a number of inaccurate statements that his analysis is based on with respect to the project. Lastly, I want to talk briefly about piecemealing. Staff's presentation talked about the fact that a number of questions were raised in the appeal to whether or not this project is piecemealed with another application for a restaurant across the street. Piecemealing occurs when you have one project, and to minimize the impacts, you, you chop them up into different pieces. What you have here are two separate, independent projects. They are separately owned, and neither project is dependent upon the other. If the restaurant were to go away, this project would still have independent utility and function, and vice versa. The staff, in the, in the staff report, did an excellent analysis of piecemealing. We also provided additional legal citations with respect to that, and I think that it demonstrates that this project has not been piecemealed. And so with that, I'd like to conclude, and as I think Erin mentioned, we would be able to respond to any questions, as well as address any comments in a rebuttal.
Thank you, Ms. Horry.
Thank you.
Give me just a moment. If you, if any council member would like to ask any questions at this time, we'll have an opportunity afterward as well, but if you'd like to ask any questions at this time, please raise your hand, I can see you. Mr. Avery, anyone else? Okay, just Mr. Avery. All right, go ahead.
Yes. How many parking spaces are there for the new building?
The new building, as submitted, had 20 on the lower level and 21 on the upper level. In order to create the rear trellis and accommodate the columns to support it, we lost the space. So now we'll be down to 20 on each level, 40 total.
And the building's square footage is 8,000?
The, the existing building is 8,000, our proposed building is 2,744.
So it's considerably overparked for its square footage, is that right?
Yes.
And why not have more building and less parking if the, two, two projects are independent?
Well, the parking, we, there, there are, yeah, the, the, parking itself is actually a commercial use, so there are numerous entities in the area that, that need parking and that use off-site parking. And so that's the, you know, that's the, our client's desire is to create that additional congregate parking. And there's, and it's actually very clearly called out in the strategic plan. That's one of the goals for the area.
Right.
Like where does the horn, where does the hornblower park when they, you know, when, when their, their clients get on the boat? There's all kinds of...
Yeah, so this is gonna be, this parking will be available for, for those types of uses, hornblower or other public spill-over parking?
We're trying to social distance here, so there's gonna be a lot of people back and forth.
All right, thank you.
So please excuse us. Yeah, yes, it'll be available through private arrangements. It is not a public parking structure.
Right.
But, you know, if a restaurant, for example, wanted to lease some spaces for its employees or an entity like the hornblower to be able to use, to rent those spaces from the applicant, that's, that's, that's the intention.
Any other questions before we go to the appellant's? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much to the applicant, stick around.
Good evening. Can you see me now?
We can, and we can hear you as well, thank you very much.
The share content button does not appear to be operational for me to project an image that I desire to.
Okay, give us just a moment. Got it?
I believe so.
Okay.
Give me one second here, so I can bring that up. Okay, let me try doing that now.
Yes, that works, thank you.
There we go. Well, first, thank you, council, for your time tonight, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. My name is Aaron Ehrlich, I'm the attorney for the applicants. We sympathize with the very long meeting that the city council has had tonight, so we provided a very lengthy, detailed attachment to our appeal, which identified a lot of legal issues, oftentimes dealing with SEQA, a few more separific topics that we can possibly address. So I, I'm gonna use my time to really address what I think the bottom line for this project is and why my clients, the appellants, are so concerned about this. As you can see from the image, my clients are the owners of the four homes that immediately surround this project, and this is anything but a usual project. The proposed parking structure for this project gets within five feet of my clients' properties. You can see each of their residences will be immediately on top of this project, and I think it's very important for the council to understand, in deliberating this issue tonight, just how close that is, five feet from the property line. It is within 25 feet of habitable space. This is... This is a really extraordinary proposal, given that dynamic. Unfortunately, we're, we're in some senses pitted against the city here. We're having to appeal the planning commission's decision. But really, the concern that we have is less with the city, but more with the applicant. We have been trying to have the applicant reduce this project into something that's more responsible and is consistent with this neighborhood. And we've had a lot of difficulty affecting any changes to it. In fact, the applicant wouldn't even communicate with us, would not discuss any changes to this project until we asked the city, and specifically you, Mr. Mayor, to intervene. So we do owe a lot of gratitude to you for helping trying to facilitate resolution of this matter. And I think a lot of positive changes were made. However, quite simply, they don't go far enough. And it's critical to understand that these changes that they now have agreed to weren't altruistic. They were made because we raised concrete, important issues in our appeal and that they had to satisfy them. So for example, really good almost doublespeak that we heard from the project applicant was that one of the concessions that they made was to reduce the height because of our concerns. Well, no, Mr. Mayor, council members, they reduced the height for this project because my clients had a recorded easement that capped the height of any improvements on their site to the existing building. It had nothing to do with a compromise whatsoever. It had to do with a legally enforceable document that they were required to comply with. I think Councilman Brenner really previewed a critical issue that I want you to strongly consider tonight, that there is simply no precedent whatsoever for having uncovered parking adjacent to single-family homes, let alone within five feet of single-family homes. That would represent a radical change of policy for this city council, for the city as a whole, and would create an extremely destructive policy that will really depress values, aesthetics, and protections of people living in their homes. Now, when you considered the Dover project, which was also adjacent to single-family homes, you required that parking structure to be covered. Well, the distance between that parking structure and the single-family homes that surrounded it versus the single-family homes here in this structure are like night and day. Those, those structures were approximately, it appears, about a hundred feet away. Here, we have five feet of separation. If you required a covering of the parking structure on Dover, you have to require it here. The only justification that we've heard why the applicant will not put a complete cover over the second story of this parking structure is that it would create structural and engineering challenges. Well, Mr. Mayor, council members, I would posit that virtually every aspect of this project presents structural and engineering challenges. The fact that it may require some additional engineering and structural configuration is not good cause to fundamentally and radically change the precedent that this city council and the city has set for projects that are going to be at the foot on top of single-family homes. Beyond those issues, again, I, I think there are some very serious CEQA issues. And I do want to just very briefly go over those. I also would be remiss if I didn't take note of the fact that this is a highly controversial project for the community. And I am very concerned that individuals of the public that may be desiring to attend and to provide public comment about this project may be unable to do so because of the circumstances that we find ourselves in. I certainly applaud the city's attempt to conduct business during this very unfortunate public health epidemic. But at the same time, when you're dealing with issues like this, which have critical importance to neighborhoods, it really is something that needs to be done in person so we can ensure that all members of the public do have an adequate opportunity to participate. And when you can't physically be there, you've got no assurance that that's actually the case. When looking at the CEQA issues, I, I do want to just reiterate very quickly a couple of the points. We do continue to believe that this is not eligible for a Class 32 exemption. When you look at the applicable general plan and zoning policies and requirements, those require buffering of residential areas. Those require projects and mayors mile to be respectful of adjacent neighborhood residential structures and homes. And simply put, we don't think that this project does that in its current state. There, while staff has indicated that a traffic study was completed for this project, that's really not the case. No traffic study was completed. Rather, a trip count was used to supposedly justify the lack of a traffic study by relying upon only the trips to and from the office as opposed to the use of the structure. Even the applicant tonight admitted that this structure is going to be used by off-site businesses. So therefore, you're going to have trips of folks driving to their point of origin, driving to this parking structure, driving back to the point of origin, and then exiting and entering. So it, there are going to be unique trips that are being generated as a result of the, this parking lot for hire as it's being proposed. Beyond that, there's been no discussion tonight of the fact that the cumulative impacts of this project have not been considered. The applicant, who is the owner of both the Garden Office and the Gardening Center, has a proposal to build a restaurant called the Garden Restaurant. There's also a nearby Newport Village project that is pending. The cumulative impacts of those projects, along with this project, have not been considered, which is a requirement to potentially qualify for the Class 32 exemption. Beyond that, there, again, hasn't been traffic analyzed. There has not been geotechnical hazards analyzed. This protracted tree has not been sufficiently analyzed. So there's no basis in the record at this point to say that there will not be significant effects on the environment posed by this project. Very quickly on the piecemealing issue, because I, I think the applicant is trying to pull the wool over our eyes, but doing a very poor job at it. This issue came about because of the applicant. The applicant, when, when they submitted their application for this project, tied it, explicitly tied it to the Garden Restaurant project. That is the reason why there are so many spaces and parking spaces here, yet such minimal office space. They said, and the staff report for the planning commission explicitly said as well, that the, that the Garden Restaurant would rely upon this site to fulfill their parking requirements. And not only did the applicant's materials and application indicate that, he also has advertised that the Garden Restaurant, and looking for prospective potential tenants for that restaurant, that it would be serviced by this parking structure. Now, a, as it's been discussed, CEQA prohibits separating related projects into smaller, separate projects because what you do by, by doing so is you eliminate the consideration of, of environmental impacts as a whole. You minimize it. Well, now they're trying to back away from their own statements by relying on this MOU to justify that they may utilize another parking space to service this restaurant. But as the council members will, will know, if they look at the MOU, it's not a legally binding document. It's
Sorry. I, I, I've lost the, I've lost the
I'd be happy to
We're having technical difficulties. We can come home?
I'd trade my house for that guy's house if he doesn't like it.
Duffy, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excuse me all.
Sorry, I had to say that.
This is Stephanie Fitzer again. I just want to let you know that the audio is coming through on the television.
Good.
Thank you.
Something's working. Good. Good for you.
One moment, everyone.
Yeah, we're good.
Needs another ten years.
We're still working on councilmember program. Okay, and
Ten or fifteen years?
And Mayor, if we cannot hear at the moment, so hold on.
I'm okay, yeah.
I'd say two, five years.
Mayor, I'm going to pause the meeting, officially pause it. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, one, I'm starting it right now. Mayor, we are back.
All right, thank you. Mr. Ehrlich, I apologize for watching. I apologize too. Before we went off audio, the last thing we heard you discuss was the MOU discussing the parking lot. So if you wouldn't mind going back to that, I'm sorry, the parking. If you wouldn't mind going back to there and starting forward, that would, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, just to check, are you able to hear me efficiently now?
Yes, we are. Thank you very much.
And the, the graphic of the project site relative to the homes is still on the screen?
Yes, it is.
Okay, very good. I'll pick up from there. I was, I believe, it sounds like I was discussing the piecemealing issue when we cut off the the, the point there was that the applicant was the one that tied in their application in the reports supporting their application and in public advertising that the office, Garden Office Project parking structure was related to the Garden Restaurant project. Now they're trying to back off of that because they are acknowledging CEQA concerns that we've raised by relying on a memorandum of understanding, which gives an option to potentially rent parking spaces at another site. But the memorandum of understanding is not a contract, not enforceable. But more to the point, and what I think is most important, is that there is no evidence that the applicant changed their application for the Garden Restaurant to have anything, have the location for parking spaces to fulfill the off-site parking requirement to anything but this site itself. So that, the fact that there's a pending application that we believe ties these two projects together, which is consistent with the application that's before you now, and the fact that the MOU is not binding and contrary to the applicant's own representations tells you that these two projects are related together. And if there's tells you that these two projects are related together, and if there's any doubt in your mind, the simplest solution is to require that the restaurant and the office structure be considered at the same time. That would alleviate any concerns about piecemealing or consideration of the cumulative impacts that those two projects will have. Those are, are the critical CQI issues, though, uh, there, there were some others that were addressed in our letter. We also raised issues with the consistency of the coastal development permit with the coastal development plan that is part of the, uh, the, the city's municipal code. And, uh, those issues which are addressed in our letter haven't been, uh, weren't addressed in the staff presentation tonight. I do not believe that they were addressed in the staff report, and they were not addressed by the applicant in their presentation in our series considerations as well. Um, whereas the CQI and the coastal development permit issues are, it, I, I must acknowledge a little technical in nature where the discretion lies with you tonight is the fact that a conditional use permit is required for this project. And the reason why this requires a discretionary approval is because under the zoning ordinance, uh, two zero point four zero point zero seven zero subsection B three, it provides that when adjacent to a residential zoning district, the development of structured parking, including rooftop parking, shall require the approval of a conditional use permit to address potential impacts to adjacent residential uses. And, uh, that's, the last several words are, are what are most critical here again. The reason why this has a public hearing component to it before the planning commission and now before you is because the conditions of approval have to quote "address" potential impacts to adjacent residential uses, end quote. The reason why we're still here is because the, at, the application as it currently stands doesn't address the potential impacts to my clients' homes to sufficient degree. It is wholly unprecedented to have a parking structure that is uncovered within five feet of single-family homes. It is absolutely necessary to have a roof structure or other complete covering over the upper level of this parking, uh, garage, uh, structure rather, to, uh, address and resolve any light, glare, noise, aesthetic, and other foreseeable negative impacts that this parking structure's operation will have on my clients. The applicant has done a good job moving this in the right direction, but they haven't gone far enough, and without a cover, there simply is no guarantee that my clients will be able to continue to enjoy and use their homes as they are accustomed to. The reliance by the applicant on the city's minimum baseline for light, glare, and noise really is not applicable here because of the extraordinary nature of this project being so close to single-family homes. Those baselines are designed for your common project. This is not your common project, this is an extraordinary project, and the council is responsible, under the municipal code, to ensure that you have adequately addressed any potential impacts on the, uh, on the appellant's homes. Beyond that, there are a couple of, uh, just generic requirements. Anytime that you are approving a conditional use permit, uh, those include, one, that quote "the design, location, and size and operating characteristics of the use are compatible with the allowed uses in the vicinity," end quote. And then secondly, also, begin quote, "that the operation of the use of the location proposed would not be detrimental to the harmonious and orderly growth of the city or endanger, jeopardize, or otherwise constitute a hazard to the public convenience, health, safety, or general welfare of persons residing and working in the neighborhood of the proposed use," end quote. Under both of those additional, uh, conditions and findings that are required for you to grant a CUP, again, you have to look at the potential impacts on this home, and without a roof cover, which you've required everywhere else, and, uh, including in circumstances where homes are much further away than what you're dealing with here, you've required a, a covering, a roof or some other comprehensive covering, and that is essential here. While it doesn't directly address something that's, that's, um, within the city's purview in terms of the private easement rights that exist with this project, it, it is really necessary for us to know that the revised plans, uh, which they submitted, which brought down the building height to the existing limit of, uh, of the, uh, the height down to the limit of the existing building, um, was guaranteed by private easement rights. And those private easement rights also provide that any landscaping or other improvements on the site also cannot go beyond the height of the existing building. And it appears to me that the landscaping plans that the applicant is relying upon to argue that they're adequately buffering, uh, their project from my client's homes will certainly encroach on their view rights and will not be a permitted element legally of this project because of the private easement rights that, uh, in order to my client's benefit. Uh, beyond that, uh, the, the easements at issue which we submitted to the planning commission and are part of the public record before you not only provide for view rights, but it also provides for access and improvement rights that exclusively in order to my client's benefits. And this project encroaches upon those areas that are, uh, that are exclusively within my client's controls. So I, I appreciate, it's not the city's council job to enforce easements, but I think these issues are very important and are highly indicative of how this applicant has gone about trying to push through a, uh, a project that is not consistent with the obligations that are incumbent upon them. So i- in sum, before I, I, uh, turn it over to the applicants to speak themselves, uh, further CQI review is required in our mind. And to the extent that further CQI review does not occur, uh, we have certain things that we believe really need to be non-negotiable starting points for additional conditions of approval. And I want to talk about, I, I want to run through those slowly, so the, uh, so you, uh, council members and, um, hopefully take note of these. One, we need to have an additional condition of approval that there will be solid walls with no voids for the portions of this project that back up to these homes. Two, we need to have either a roof or some other, uh, complete covering over the upper level of this structure. Three, if that is not a traditional roof covering, then there needs to be appropriate aesthetic design to minimize the, uh, the aesthetic, uh, potential negatives aesthetic values associated with a, uh, with a, um, an option that's other than a roof. So for example, I'll be more direct. If, if the trellis were to be applied over the entirety of the surface of the upper level, then there needs to be fully mature vines covering the entirety of that trellis structure. If you are entertaining something other than a conventional roof, there needs to be assurance that light, noise, glare, and other nuisances that we're concerned about five feet from my client's properties will be adequately addressed. And without some type of protection on top of that trellis through vine, mature vines or otherwise, or other, uh, green options, uh, we're not going to achieve that. Uh, the, the fourth condition that we believe is essential is that there is a, a limitation on the number of cars that are allowed to park on the upper parking level to the number of spaces. What we're concerned about is that this may be a red herring that they say there are twenty parking spaces on the, uh, upper level, but then they park forty cars via valet or more cars on that upper level, significantly increasing the environmental impacts on my clients, which, uh, which have not been analyzed by the applicant. The applicant's analysis is predicated upon one car by use for one space, so it's important that they are limited accordingly. We also believe as a, I believe sixth condition now, that motorcycles should not be permitted from using the upper level. Naturally, the noise level associated with those vehicles is significantly greater than traditional vehicles, and to adequately abate the ways impact of my clients, uh, motorcycles should not be permitted on the upper level. They can use the bottom, the lower level if necessary. Uh, but the, the, that's very important to, uh, to achieve, uh, a reasonable compromise here. And, uh, seventh and lastly, it's important, uh, similar along the lines of limiting the number of cars to the number of parking spaces, there should be a condition that the upper parking level be only used for parking. It's a parking structure, that's how they've analyzed it, that's how they've represented it. And, uh, them potentially trying to throw parties up there, rent it out for other, uh, promotional uses would fundamentally change the nature of the impacts that they've analyzed, uh, for that portion of this project. So, uh, again, it's very critical for us to have assurance that we will not incur, uh, environmental impacts that have not been analyzed, that it be limited to parking. So tho- those are the additional conditions that we would like to see. Uh, a- again, we're, we are very thankful for the mayor's involvement in getting the applicant, uh, uh, moving towards a project that's more responsible and appropriate for this neighborhood and the community, but they're not all the way there yet. Again, I can't repeat it enough times, we're five feet away from my client's homes. Just like Dover, which is a far less intrusive situation than what we're dealing with here, it's necessary that this upper level be covered to adequately abate the impacts of my clients. Um, I'll, I'll have a couple of concluding quick words after my client's speak. I've provided their, uh, their names and phone numbers to the city clerk, so, uh, I would like them to have the opportunity to speak now.
Mr. Ehrlich, before we do that, um, I think I missed two of the conditions that you had listed. You mind if I run this?
Please.
All right, uh, solid walls with no voids on backup to the, uh, on the walls backing up to the houses. Um, a roof with a complete covering on the upper level, and if, um, not that, at least a discussion about aesthetics. Uh, one car, one space to avoid valet, no motorcycles on the top and upper, um, can only be used for parking. I know I missed one or two.
Uh, n- no, you actually have them correct, the...
Sorry, I thought you said seven.
I, I may have misspoke, so I don't have them numbered in front of me, so I apologize if I did so.
No problem, making sure I had them.
Yes, but either, either a roof covering or if a trellis uh, or other, uh, structure without a continuous cover is contemplated, that continuous cover needs to be a required design element, um, if there is an alternative to a roof.
Okay, all right, I appreciate that. Um, so I just, uh, received word from our clerk that all of the appellants are online right now. So, let's see, uh, great, it sounds like we've got some... Oh, so you, you have a particular person you'd like to start first?
Uh, Mr. Woods was going to speak first, then Mr. Castro, then, um, Mr. Staub, and lastly, Ms., uh, Sidster Palalas.
Okay, that sounds great.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, my name is Hal Woods, and I reside at two nine one nine Cliff Drive for the past thirty years, located directly above the proposed project tonight, at two fifteen Riverside. As I've stated many times in the past few weeks, I strongly believe in property rights. I'm educated and trained as an architect, and I'm also a licensed general contractor. I'm a developer for a, for the past eighteen years of a home building company, and I'm one of the four original owners and planned the development, uh, above the two, two fifteen Riverside project. As I said, I believe in property rights are a privilege, and the right comes with responsibility to be a good neighbor and care about your surrounding property owners who have the same rights. Our legal counsel has been working with Mr. Jabara's team nonstop for the past two weeks, trying to find common ground to resolve our differences that I believe we have before you tonight. This has been a compromise on both sides that we can be proud of. We all must coexist and acknowledge change is hard but inevitable. This building has been in a state of disrepair and in need of renovation for many years. Mr. Miss, Mr. Jabara's attention to detail, uh, through his very, uh, uh, comp- competent architects, uh, and quality construction will no doubt be continued through this project. Respect for neighboring residents with regard to quality of life and safety are imperative. We all know there is a precedent being set here this evening, therefore, we must tread carefully. We must work together as a community to protect our standard of living. When blending mixed juices, there's a fine balance that must be considered in seeking the right combination to protect both property rights as well as those who reside nearby. I would be happy to support the project, uh, tonight if the following conditions of approval were added as, uh, Mr. Aaron spoke of, uh, and, um... Thank you for your time and dedication and service to our great city. You are setting the bar for our quality of life, standards, and values, thank you very much.
Who's next, Mr. Ehrlich?
Mr. Castro, please.
Yes, this is Er- this is Ernie, Ernie Castro here. Mr. Mayor, and hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Ernest V. Castro. I own and reside at twenty-nine fifteen Cliff Drive with my wife for the last thirty years. The rear of my home abuts the property at two fifteen Riverside Drive. And we are within five feet of the proposed two-story parking structure to be built. To begin with, I am very disappointed this hearing wasn't postponed due to the cor- coronavirus issues. My partner and neighbor Hal Woods and I built these four homes in nineteen eighty-nine. We are both residential builders, and I am also a subcontract, framing subcontractor for many major developers in South, South California. The project appears to be a two-story parking structure with forty-plus parking spaces for less than three thousand square feet of office space, which would only require twelve to fifteen spaces. It is obvious that the parking is intended for the restaurant project across the street. I was misled to believe that, that we're going to build, they're... Believe that they were going to build an office building similar to the existing building and footprint with the ground-level parking as required. With a two-story structure, it moves the parking closure to our homes and will serve evening restaurant goers late into the evening. Instead of an office building which generally poses early in the evening, there will be parking and people activity well into the evening with light, pollution, noise emitting from cars, and noise also from revelers attending the restaurants on VCH. This will dramatically impact the quality of life. I don't think there has been any other parking structures approved so close to residential property. I believe the height of the structure is figured to the parking level depth.
Did everybody else? Grace, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I could, yeah. Is the caller still on?
Can you guys hear me?
I can hear all of you, but not the caller.
Yeah. Okay, Mayor, we're back on.
Yeah, I. I need to, I think I need to stop for a second. Cause I am a little concerned about the issues that we're facing right now. Yeah, I gotta talk to you, we, we need to, we need to get some thought here on what we're dealing with, because this is just. It's not okay that we're experiencing this much tech, tech issues while we're going through this, so. I'd like to understand a due process issue, are we, are we having any issues, the, can we continue, or is this, what's going on here?
I'm, I mean, I think there's some, there are kind of some concerns with the due process, because, you know, it keeps cutting in and out. And, you know, there could be an argument that, that maybe somebody didn't hear everything that was said. Um, cause I don't know when Duffy fell off. Um, you know, if everybody, if all the council members will confirm that they basically heard all the testimony, I think we're fine to continue, but.
I, I can't, I can't even confirm that.
I can't either.
Yeah, where we end and pick up, yeah, where we picked up and end.
So I, I think there are some issues with that, so it might be best just to continue the item and try to work out some of these technical issues.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna suppress, I'm gonna suppress some frustration and just say to everyone involved, I'm really sorry. I'm really sorry that this is, that this is happening, that you, you deserve better than this, and so, um. You know, I, I have to make a motion right now to continue this, because I can't, I can't in good faith. I just can't in good faith say that we're hearing this properly, and I can't in good faith say that. I, I'm sorry to everybody, I.
It's fine.
Everyone understands how frustrated I have to get to the point where I'm, I'm doing what I'm doing right now. But I can't, I just can't see this. I'm sorry, I, I, that's my motion, I, we have to continue this, I don't think that we are doing this right, and this is embarrassing.
Well, I don't think our staff, um, are totally prepared and they're working really hard, so it's nothing, it's nothing personal, we'll.
Personal.
Yeah.
No, I, I'm not, and I'm not saying that, and I agree, everybody's working hard, everything's frustrating, th- this is, everything about this is, is difficult, so I'm not. I agree with you, Kevin, I'm not trying to make the, this isn't personal, this is just, we're trying to run a meeting and it's not going well, so, I can't say.
Well, it's extraordinary times, I mean, there's just a lot to put together here on such an important project.
Look, I'm sorry to the, I'm sorry to the applicant, and I'm sorry to the appellants that you're going through this, this is just, like I said, it's just not okay, so. I've got a motion in a second, and, um, uh, I think, um, Aaron, how do we, how do we handle this? Cause I mean, this is, this is pretty untraditional to, to have to deal, to do this.
You can continue to a date certain, you can just leave this out, um, out a month?
No, I mean, I wanna move it to the next meeting.
All right.
So if we make, if I make the motion right now, and we.
To the next meeting.
Do I need to go, I need to go to public on the motion to continue?
I, uh, I think, I think technically you should go to the public. Actually, I think you're fine, you just go, just go ahead and continue it, that's fine. I don't think you need to make public comment on it, you know, the item's still open, um, take it back up.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, everybody, I think that's, I, I think that's what we need to do here. So, um, Mr. Hurley, I apologize, thank you for calling in, as I, we'll get this, we'll do better, we'll do better. Um, and in the meantime, uh, you're, everybody, um, you're welcome to use me again to see if we can resolve this thing before the next meeting, so. We'll see how it goes, but, um, yeah, anyway, so, Aaron, how do we handle this one, that, and procedurally?
Yeah, so I, I think just call, roll call vote to continue it.
Mr. Hurdman?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Dixon, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Muldoon, I.
Yes.
Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
Ms. Brenner?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Duffield?
Yes.
Mr. Avery?
Yes.
And I'm a yes too. All right. We'll, uh, we'll do better, folks, we'll do better, but we're gonna, we're gonna need to continue this to the next meeting. Do we, before we go to the next item, um, need to, I'm gonna go up to some folks on IT, whether they think that we need to stop the meeting altogether, or whether we continue?
Why, why don't we take a five-minute break?
Okay, all right, we're gonna take a break, we'll come back in five minutes.
We're back on, on the air.
All right, um, to the folks still watching, thank you very much, um, we're gonna do a roll call in just a second, but let me just tell you what we're about to do. Um, when we go to item ten, I'm gonna move to continue it, uh, because of technology issues, um, given the, uh, given the contractual rights issues affected there. Here, I'm, I'm gonna advise that we continue that, so we'll get to that in a second. Um, we do need to do number, item number eleven, which is, um, Harbor Days, uh, the Harbor Day, um, item. Uh, the one after that is the street sweeping, given the timing of that, uh, we need to move forward on that as well. Grace will do a fairly brief presentation of the, uh, a discussion on the, um, financial impact. Uh, there was a lot of information in our report. If you have questions and comments, we'll go through that. Uh, we're going to, um, continue item number fourteen on the CIP, cause it will require a lot of, um, it would require a lot of conflict issues. And so we're going to, uh, wait until we can kind of get the technology set up. So, um, with that, uh, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna ask Leilani to do roll call one more time, and then we'll move forward.
Councilmember Hurdman?
Present.
Councilmember Dixon?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Muldoon?
Present.
Councilmember Brenner?
Here.
Councilmember Duffield?
Here.
Mayor Protan Avery?
Here.
Mayor O'Neil?
I'm here as well, all right, so we're gonna go into item number ten, um, and I'm gonna move to continue, if I have a second?
I'll second it.
I appreciate that, uh, Mr. Harp, one, do we need to make public comments on the motion to continue?
I think it'd probably be good to go ahead and give public comment on the motion to continue.
All right, do I have any public comments in the, um, community room on motion, on our motion to continue?
Yes, one moment. Go ahead. I'm like, Subjer?
I have to say, I couldn't quite hear what your motion was, but my question about this item is actually about the hearing. Uh, this, this item is on terminating, uh, solid waste franchises. At two meetings back, you adopted a resolution. Saying that tonight there would be hearing on granting. Solid waste franchises under a new agreement, twenty-two year agreement. That's not on the agenda, does anybody know what happened with that schedule hearing?
Thank you, Mr. Subjer, uh, I'll speak louder, the motion was to, a motion to continue. All right, we have one call on, we have one, uh, phone call on hold, so I'll take that one. All right, no calls, all right, so, uh, I'm gonna take a roll call vote on this, uh, Mr. Hurdman?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Muldoon?
Aye.
Ms. Dixon?
Aye.
Ms. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Duffield?
Aye.
Mr. Avery?
Aye.
I am an aye as well, all right, we're gonna go into item number eleven, um.
Can I interrupt this real quick? That was a continuance to the next meeting.
I apologize, yes.
And does anyone, everyone else understand that as well, will they have the council members?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you for clarification, all right, we're gonna move into item number eleven, um, does anyone need a, uh, staff report on item number eleven? Or I'm sorry, staff presentation?
No.
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 Any questions or comments?
I'll ask one question, just to be, for public record clarity's sake, may I?
Yes, absolutely, go ahead, Ms. Dixon.
Um, is, what member of staff is there, Grace or Dan?
Oh, Dan, I need you to unmute yourself, please, there you go.
It's Dan, I'm here.
Hi, Dan, uh, we've, we've done this type of, uh, authorization before, could you just clarify any risks to the city whatsoever?
So, no, um, so this is, uh, an, an opportunity for. A school, a church, a hospital, anything that the city deems is, uh, in the community's interest to avail them to the public. Uh, uh, um, tax exempt financing, uh, the obligation does not represent an obligation of the city. It's the sole responsibility of, of the Harbor Day School. Um, but in order to, for, uh, all or a portion of the loan to qualify as tax exempt debt. The city must hold a public hearing, providing members of the community to speak in favor or against, uh, the use of tax exempt bonds. And, um, Harbor Day School is looking to issue about fifty-five million, or not to exceed fifty mi- five million in tax exempt debt, uh, for their. Sure, uh, remodel. Uh, so after taking public comment, the staff recommendation would be to close the public hearing, adopt the resolution. And find, uh, the improve, um, the financing exempt from sequel.
And the city of Newport Beach would have no financial liability?
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, uh, then, um. No, I'm sorry, you said public hearing, do we need to open? Yeah, I'm sorry, we do need to.
Yes.
We'll be opening the public hearing now, do we have any comments from, uh, members of the public in the community room?
Uh, Mayor O'Neil, this is Jim Subjer again, uh, uh, as I comment in writing, perhaps I'm the only one who has this feeling, but I think the tax exempt statute. For actual city uses. And granting this to various private investors. Seems to me jeopardize the use of that or the of that for cities, so I would be opposed, thank you.
Thank you, we do have a couple of phone calls in, so, uh, we'll start with those. All right, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Peggy Palmer, and I thank you very much, it's, uh, nine forty-five in the evening. Thank you very much for taking these calls. I just want to make a, uh, comment with why the community has a discord. With regards to the project at two fifteen, fifteenth street. And I know Will and a lot of you guys don't live in West Newport, however, there is an in, yes.
So this item is dealing with, uh, tax exempt bonds for Harbor Day School?
Okay, well, you know what, well, I'm gonna tell you about Harbor Day Bonds and Tax Exempt School, that, you know what? I don't have anything to say about this, that Duffy's a dud, you're okay, Diane Dixon's doing a great job. Joy's doing a great job, and I've got graffiti and a ghetto over here, so what do you have to say about that?
I don't have to say Peggy, but I'm gonna refrain for now, why don't we go to the next?
You should refrain, and, and guess what, I've got every Mexican dude next door.
Peggy, 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 Peggy.
No, no, no.
Let's keep this one, um, let's keep this one a different tone, all right, let's maybe go to the next caller on this one.
Wow.
I'm sorry, all right. Okay, all right, go ahead, please. All right, if you can hear us on the phone, go ahead, please. Hi, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can now, go ahead, thank you.
Thank you, uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers, my name's Paul Casey. I'm a resident of Newport Beach and a member of the Board of Trustees of Harbor Day School. As you probably know, Harbor Day School has been in existence since nineteen fifties and has been operating in our current location and buildings for over forty years. The Board of Trustees and the school administration have been working for over a decade to replace our existing facilities. So the school can continue to deliver outstanding education to its current and future generations of students. The new structures we will be building with the proceeds of this bond issuance will be a dramatic improvement to an important educational, educational institution in our city. Our new campus structures will be compliant with current code requirements for ADA access, earthquake hazards. And designed to provide a more functional educational environment for the kids to come. We are now ready to begin that project. Access to the financing we are seeking is afforded to nonprofit institutions like Harbor Day School. To assist in our ability to operate successfully and help fund important needs like this project. This request is critical to our institution's future and will be fully repaid by Harbor Day School. We hope you will support our request for approval of this issuance of these bonds and will impose no, which will not impose no liability. Or cost on the city of Newport Beach, thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you very much, we have one more, uh, caller online, so, go to that one. Okay, go ahead.
Good day, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Charles Klop. Firstly, this is a difficult medium to communicate with you, as it, it offers no, um, rece- reciprocity. Um, secondly, the, um, the item before you, well, may be popular, is difficult to, um, argue here in this forum. Well, we have the ability only to comment, and you have the ability to choose, so, thank you.
Okay, all right, um, so we'll bring it back to, uh, council, any discussion on this item? I'll move to approve staff recommendation.
I'll second.
We have last seconds.
I'll go with Mr. Hurdman. Um, is that, did, I'm sorry, you know what, I forgot before I did that, I'm gonna close public hearing on this item. With my motion to approve staff recommendation, still second, Mr. Hurdman?
Yes.
All right, that sounds good, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Hurdman?
Aye.
Mr. Muldoon?
Uh, excellent institution, but I'm voting no, cause I don't agree with this.
Okay, Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
Ms. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Duffield?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Avery?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Wait just one moment. All right, we will move into item number twelve, which is the approval of a service agreement for street sweeping services. The Johnson Corporation DBA, Sense Property Services. Uh, does anyone need a staff report on this item before you start pulling it up, Mr. Bukowjewicz?
Uh, Mr. Avery, I would like a short one.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, um, good evening, uh, council members. Uh, Mark Bukowjewicz, the Utilities Director, a brief presentation regarding this contract. Um, as you know, we have a, uh, as you may know, we have a ten-year contract with our street sweeping provider that's expiring here in May. And we issued a request for proposals, and, uh, we're recommending to you, uh, a new service provider based on the proposal. One moment. Jackie, can you get slide three? Sorry about that, one second. One more. Okay, so the, uh, the proposal process was a formal, formal process, uh, conducted by our department and the finance department. Uh, where we have specifications and. where we had specifications and routes and new requirements such as liquidated damages and penalties and new equipment to reduce noise and better sweeping and best long-term value. Next slide. And so we're recommending tonight a ten-year agreement with Sunset Property Services. Sunset is committed to their pricing. Their pricing is competitive within the market. They've agreed to all of our service requirements, including the new equipment. And they have quite a bit of experience here in Orange County. Next slide. The challenge on this project is, is that our current cost is actually well below market value. So this new contract brings it to market value, which includes a two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar annual budget impact moving forward. However, if we do need to scale back services temporarily, we can do that. You know, it will include a transition of up to six months. And we'll be working on public outreach. And, and as we're starting this contract right now, we need to procure the, the new street sweepers. There's delays in getting those, so we're gonna have to reduce some sweeping of arterials. And there's gonna be some temporary substitutions. And then the city staff is also gonna be operating the city's backup sweeper during the transition. But we're looking forward to getting this contract started and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Did anyone have any questions for Mr. Vakoyevich? I see, hang on a second. I see Ms. Dixon. Anyone else?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Muldoon. You know what? I'm gonna go with Mr. Muldoon first since he was the one who requested the staff report.
Take that, Diane. So there's a four-hundred-thousand-dollar delta between roughly the next lowest bidder. And I've seen staff report and you took some extra due diligence to make sure they could perform because such a high, such a large discrepancy. Can you tell me what, what those reassurance, assurances, I should say, were given that the staff says here, our staff was initially concerned with Sunset's pricing?
Sure, yeah. So when we got to pricing initially, there was, pricing was quite a bit lower than the other competitors. But we spoke with Sunset and then we checked all of their references. And then we called around to several other cities. And so it really depends when you're looking at city, uh, city street sweeping, if you have newer contracts or older contracts. And what we found, that's not my dog, by the way. What we found is that the, uh, the contracts were right in range. It's definitely on the less expensive end. It's, and it's just a very competitive price. And, and they do a lot of other cities in Orange County and they're close nearby in Irvine. And the way we have the contract structured, they believe, and even with the new equipment, brand-new street sweepers that are gonna be dedicated to the city, they feel and we feel that they can deliver that service at that cost.
Diane, were those your dogs?
That was one of them.
They could hear street sweepers being spoken about and dogs don't like street sweepers. So I think that's what happened there.
No, Pat was going out to paddle and he barked, she barked because the garage door went up. Got to open.
Well, good. Well, I'm done with my question, so thank you.
Okay, quick question. Just, you talk about transition. Well, can you, can you assure us and all the residents that, you know, all of our complicated logistics on days of week, street sweeping, trash pickup, all of these intersections of activities on our streets will, on the same schedules will continue as is? Or are you gonna improve it in any way? Or what will happen in the transition?
Good question. Our plan is to keep, and we will, we'll keep all of the basic residential routes the same and transition into those right away. What they're gonna see different is they're gonna see a different sweeper. They're gonna see a different company. They're gonna also see mistakes, right? The sweeper's gonna turn on the wrong street at the wrong time and then realize. I mean, that's just part of the learning curve.
Sure.
What we're gonna have to reduce in the interim is some of the arterials and some of the frequencies. But they're gonna be doing all the major ones. All that, we have everything mapped out from what we call a turn-by-turn basis. So mapped out for the sweeper to turn exactly at every location and how to sweep. But even then, there'll be a learning curve. But we expect a good transition. This company's done several, what's called onboarding, where they transition to a new provider, a new company, a new location. And when we've talked to other agencies, they seem to do it well.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, any other, I'm sorry, let's see. I've got Mr. Avery and Ms. Brenner, so I'll go Mr. Avery.
I'm just excited about the new machines. Could you say something about them? They must be more efficient, less pollution, all the rest of that?
Well, the existing machines that we have through the existing company, they're, they're good, they're good machines. But they're ten years old. And so as you can imagine, you know, they wear out. And they've been maintained well and all of that stuff. But here we are. We're gonna have twenty-twenty-one model, brand-new sweeper. So they're gonna be the most efficient in terms of, they're all gonna be C and G, natural gas operated. They'll have the best equipment on there. And really where you, where you will notice is they will be less, it won't be as loud. And they will pick up better. That's just a fact with newer equipment. And in terms of having a long tenure contract, you wanna start out on the right foot with new equipment. What we recommend.
Right, thank you.
All right, Ms. Brenner.
Mark, I had a question. It seems like maybe when Nancy was councilwoman for our district, you were talking, I heard, there was talk about narrowing the time that we disallowed parking on certain streets because the street sweeper could come within a two-hour window rather than longer. Is there any discussion of that?
No, we haven't looked at revising the time, Councilmember Brenner. I mean, we can, we can look at specific ones. Any of those that we revised would have to bring back to council. Sometimes those time periods are built that way. So if the sweeper needs to get called off to, let's say, a vehicle accident, they can come and handle that and still get back on the route. You know, it's highly coordinated with our police department in terms of enforcement and the traffic control division. And, and if there's a specific request, we can look at it. About forty percent of the city is posted for no parking during those times. The other sixty percent is not posted.
Thanks.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. We're gonna go to public comment then. So we have, we have the community room. So let's start with the community room first, please.
Hi, Honorable Mayor, City Council. I'm Andrea Van Essean with Sunset Property Services. You were the current lowest competitive bidder and the highest point rated bidder. We wanted to make sure that we were here today to kind of show who we are and meet you in this very unconventional way. I will keep it brief, but wanted to introduce our company. We are a local business. We've been in business since nineteen sixty-seven. We are family-owned and operated. And we've been part of the Orange County community in our Irvine headquarters since nineteen, excuse me, since nineteen seventy-eight. We have been a successful provider as staff relayed in other prestigious and surrounding cities. And successfully onboarded this, even through the challenges of the phasing and the challenges of COVID and some of these things that have come up after, including some of the challenges that have been presented by the incumbent not, not holding to their original phasing plan. But as these curveballs, as these learning curves come up, we're going to work with you. Been successful in multiple cities. And what actually be onboarding is the team that has been onboarding for decades. So we're excited to work with you. We're excited to work with staff. And we're excited to add City of Newport Beach to the contracts that we provide.
All right.
Questions will be in the audience and you can definitely call on us.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, next speaker, please. Okay, we don't have any there, so we'll go to the phones. All right, go ahead on the phone. All right, so I need you to mute whatever you're watching us on. All right, so if you're calling right now, I just need you to mute whatever you're watching us on and then you can begin your comments.
Good evening. This is Team Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council and City Management. My name is Gary Clifford. I'm the Executive Vice President of Athens Services, your current street sweeping partner. By way of introduction, I'd like you to know that I have about thirty-five years of municipal experience as an employee, supervisor, city council member, mayor pro tem, and mayor. I ask that you reconsider your recommendation and award your contract to Athens. We've served your city for the past ten years. Your staff has codified this by awarding Athens the highest technical score. Our price was competitive with the other two sweeping companies. There's one outlier who gained a big spread by a significantly lower price. Usually when one variable is so far removed from the rest, there's cause for concern. As an expert in this field, I have grave concern in the ability of any company performing under the guidelines of your current RFP at seven-hundred-thousand dollars a year. Just the cost of the new sweepers, the increased curb miles, and the current legal labor and benefit exceed that amount. Please take note of that. For the last five years, we've worked with staff to bring your pricing in line with the current standards, including the legislative labor and benefit increases. In addition to trying to extend our current contract at a lower rate, we've met with your staff and reduced our rate to one-million-one-hundred-thousand a year. As an experienced city official and tactical sweeping expert, I ask you to please research this and allow Athens to continue servicing your city. Our reduced rate will put us at the best price and the best technical rating. There won't be any changes to your service. You'll still get your new sweepers and things will continue smoothly for your citizens. Athens has served Newport Beach proudly for over ten years. Your customers are groomed to expect our excellent operational performance and customer service. Before this is awarded, I think staff should tour the sweeping yard and look at the operations personally, especially customer service. We have a live call center with over sixty-five agents that answer all the calls with immediacy like we have been. I strongly urge you to reconsider the recommendation due to the low price. It's just not tenable in any circumstance. Three respondents were in the thirty-dollar range and one is in the nineteen-dollar range. I appreciate your attention to this matter and the opportunity Athens has had in observing your community and being a good steward to your citizens. I'd hate to see this decision go forward and fall apart later due to the circumstances I've previously mentioned. And I also sent this to you in writing. It's a little bit longer, but I had to reduce it for three minutes. I'm available for any questions or comments, but please note the difference in the rates with your competitive respondents to your RFP. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have any other public speakers? Okay. All right, all right, you're, if you're on the phone, go ahead.
I am, thank you. I have two quick, my name is Jeff Newman. I'm a longtime resident. I was, I think both of my issues have been covered, but I was wondering if there was a way to keep the current schedule. I live on the peninsula and a lot of our people, a lot of people down here, we kind of pattern our stuff by moving our cars around. And I think Diane asked the question of, you know, when they do make a change, can we keep on the same schedule? Like, the guy starts in my area, then moves along a different area. So I was hoping that we could continue with the same schedule. And my second question, I think was just by the previous caller was brought up. It had originally said, the original company was not interested in continuing because they needed to raise their price. But anyways, I'll, I'll let you guys deal with that part of it. And I just wanted to say thank you all of you for all of your time and good luck.
And thanks for sticking around on the call.
Yeah, don't worry. Take care and have a good night.
Yeah, you too. All right, we have one more caller. All right, if you're on the phone, go ahead.
Hi there. My name is Charles Klop. Firstly, I'm sorry to be calling you on this subject. It seems like an ministerial thing that shouldn't warrant discussion. But the delta between the Athens' original five-hundred-thousand-dollar contract, now a million-three, now a million-one warrants some discussion. And in previous lives, there have been creative options offered for this kind of service. Maybe the city buys the trucks and gives them to the applicant. Maybe the city buys the trucks and leases the employees. Seems like there's a lot of things here that should be explored before we award a contract to somebody for seven-hundred-thousand, which is two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand more than we're paying, or a million-one, which is double what we're paying. Maybe there's some options here that are better for the community and don't involve hiring additional employees and paying, you know, Cal-Purs options forever. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I believe that was a caller, so let's bring it back. I, I mean, I, I will admit, I am curious. I know you've, you've covered this a little bit, Mark, but can you walk us through just a little bit? So you get these four bids in. One is substantially lower. What do you do at that point to make sure that you are confident that they can actually do the job?
Okay, yes, Mayor. What we did is, the first thing we did is we met with the company twice, talked to them about the project specifications and their costs. The other thing we did is we called all of their references. And then the third thing that we did is we compared pricing of other cities. But just to give you an example, our current pricing for our, for our current street sweeping service is in the fourteen mile, fourteen dollars per mile. Our new price now is nineteen dollars per mile. What was proposed by others was in the thirty dollars per mile. So you see this big spread. But then you start looking at other Orange County cities. So if I look at Irvine, they're paying about sixteen dollars a mile. If I look at some of the South County cities like Mission Viejo, the Lagunas, they're in the seventeen to nineteen-dollar range. If I look at Huntington Beach, they're paying about twenty-four dollars per mile. But all depends, everyone has their little differences on specifications. Who does the dumping, where, where the equipment is stored, how the maintenance is done, what are the requirements for the equipment? But so we vetted this, you know, time, we've put a lot of time into this. And they've committed to us and we have to take their word that they can service us on, on our requirements here. And based on our, what we've evaluated, I'm, I'm comfortable with it and recommend we move forward with it.
And this may have been in the staff report, but what was the, what other, what other Orange County cities do they have contracts with?
Just one second. Well, I know one of them is Mission Viejo, City of Irvine, Laguna. It's, I think it's two out of the three Lagunas, Laguna Nogal or Laguna Woods or the others. Yeah, and. Yeah, so they have, they have quite a few, quite a few cities on there. To San Clemente as well, too.
Okay, so it's, it's no joke. I mean, and, and looking at that pricing, I mean, some of the, some of the issues, I guess some of the issues are the. I'm sorry, I'm just blanking on the name of it right now. The extra, the extra cost for labor that the state has imposed.
Failure wage.
Correct.
Failure wage.
So, is it, so that, I mean, that, that might explain some of the, that might explain some of the differences. But I just wanna make sure we're, so is anyone paying thirty dollars a, thirty dollars per? I mean, that's, is that's, we had three bids that are in that range.
Well, we, like, for example, City of Fort Tins is paying twenty-six dollars. So, I mean, there's, there's ones up there that are probably that high. But a lot of that pricing includes the sweeping company taking the materials away and taking it to the dump. But we allow them to dump over here at our city transfer station. And that provides us additional phasing.
Okay, Ms. Dixon?
Uh, thank you, Mark. Couple of questions. What was Johnson's technical score? Why, in comparison to Athens? How did it come they were knocked down a little bit?
Their technical score was still high, was just a little bit lower. Out of fifty points, they got a score of forty. I don't have the exact details of what, which areas they were maybe weaker in, but. And then the incumbent Athens, they scored. and then the incumbent Athens, they scored forty-five out of fifty. You typically see that where an incumbent, you know, has more information because they know the knowledge of the city and they usually score better. And I think that represented their score. But, uh, Sunset, um, they still had a good competitive score. They weren't, and if they were too low, remember our criteria is if they don't have high enough of a technical score, then they automatically get deleted. They were high enough.
Um, I did notice, I was looking for something else on the agenda for today's Board of Supervisors meeting. And if I'm not mistaken, they were approved by the Board of Supervisors or something.
Correct. Yeah, Sunset also sweeps for the County of Orange as well, too. That's another one.
That was coincidentally on, on the agenda. So you have a great deal of confidence in making this change?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, any further discussion on this item?
I move approval.
Moved by Mr. Avery.
I'll second.
Sorry, um, I saw Mr. Hurdman, so I'll go with Mr. Hurdman, sorry. So I'm gonna go, uh, let's see, Mr. Avery moved, Mr., first staff recommended, Mr. Hurdman has a second. Any further discussion? All right, I'll poll. Mr. Hurdman?
Aye.
Mr. Muldoon? Sorry, uh, Mr. Muldoon? Oh, can you just signal for me? I can't hear you. Perfect, all right, that's an aye. Ms. Dixon?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Brenner?
Yes.
Mr. Duffield?
Aye.
Avery?
Aye.
I am an aye as well. Um, all right, and then, uh, moves us into item number thirteen. There was extensive discussion on this in the packet, but it is important and so, uh, we do a very brief overview, but, uh, an item like this, I would normally try to move, but frankly, the amount of money involved in this discussion is pretty significant. And so I do want to just do a, um, a brief overview and allow for questions or comments.
We, we can't hear Dan. Is there, is, is the audio?
Want to see the picture?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Do we hear music?
Okay.
Yeah. Those were the good old days.
Can we be in a change?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, this is Dan Motu Chevy, to your Finance Director. I'm here to, uh, endeavor to provide you a brief update of our, um, the, the impact on our budget related to COVID-19. Uh, I first want to recognize that the life safety measures necessary to contain the virus are at odds, um, or create tension between the, the, the economic impacts to our global economy. Um, and that's unfortunate, but, uh, let's, let's have a, a, a look at the impact on our budget. As you all know, the global response to COVID-19, um, has created a sudden and swift decline in consumer behavior, consumer spending rather, uh, disrupting the, the vast majority of business sectors. Uh, what no one knows is how long the presence of the virus will disrupt the economy. Um, um, either by stay-at-home orders or perhaps, uh, the consumer behavior after the initial threat is over. Uh, what we've done is conservatively, um, uh, use in our projection a forecast that there will be some level of disruption for most of, of the year. Um, I went at even calling our projections an actual forecast as much as they are provisions that we've made in our budget to react to the changing landscape. So one thing I wanted to point out is not all city revenue sources are the same, so please don't make those, uh, or, or fall prey to making those same comparisons. Um, property tax, as you know, is, is the most stable of the, of, of the revenue sources. But when you look at other cities, um, the... Okay, I'm trying to advance the screen. Okay, here we go. So when you look at other cities, uh, you notice that they're more volatile, uh, sources of revenue being sales tax and transient occupancy tax take a greater percentage of the total general fund budget. Uh, with Costa Mesa, fifty percent of their budget is subject to a tremendous amount of volatility, where Newport Beach is only at twenty-eight percent, uh, is subject to that volatility. Irvine at thirty-nine and, um, and Anaheim is at sixty percent. So indeed, we have, um, a difference in, um, what we might expect between cities. And, um, so, uh, keep that in mind and, and also, uh, we don't know the level of, of fiscal preparedness prior to, uh, the pandemic. But getting into nineteen twenty, uh, I won't spend a lot of time, we, we looked in detail. Yes, sir.
Sorry, I was on mute, otherwise I would have caught you earlier. Will, do you mind if I ask a quick question?
Not at all, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, could you go back to that prior slide? I think it's great slide, uh, shows a lot of what's going on with the Orange County's economy. And I see Anaheim obviously much more disproportionate numbers based on some other items. That's obviously attributed to Disney and the stadium?
Well, it's, uh, yeah, there's sales tax, uh, mainly the hotels. You can see hotels are roughly a hundred and sixty million. Uh, but the, between the hotels and stadium sales, there's, between sales tax and a transient occupancy tax uh, represents sixty percent of their general fund, which is nearly four hundred million dollars.
Okay, I have something along, along the bottom of my screen that prevents me from seeing the very bottom. So thanks for clarifying that. Uh, Costa Mesa, would you explain why that looks a little different from Newport?
So, uh, Co- Costa Mesa is, uh, significantly tied to sales tax, uh, sales tax. They have fewer transient occupancy tax, uh, as you can see by the lower bar, but they are at the whimmer, at the whim of consumer behavior.
So that's South Coast Plaza for the most part?
Yeah, probably.
Well, it's the highest grossing mall in, in North America, so, uh, I imagine that's what it is. So...
Yeah. It's competing with, uh, South Coast Plaza.
It is, yes, yes. Uh, so, or maybe it's just highest grossing in California, I'm not sure, but it's very substantial. Um, and so Newport Beach, uh, this goes to, I think, how important it is that we try to get takeout and patron all our restaurants. Um, obviously hotel stays are minimal right now and HOV is not bringing in as many staff members because the curb's been flattened, so we don't have a lot of people staying in hotels for medical response reasons, um, or hotels, I should say. Uh, I know that for a lot of, for us council members, we see this all the time, but a lot of people are watching today who don't normally watch. Would you break it down on a really basic level about these revenue? Not so much in categories, but maybe household names or, you know, hotels, businesses that, that we look to?
In, in our own community?
Yes, so like Fletcher, you know, the real, the real entities we rely on.
So on sale, sales tax, the two main drivers are autos and transportation and, uh, and, and restaurant sales. Um, so, uh, those two industries are hit pretty hard. Um, I believe, um, sales tax, when we, when we polled, um, those, those, those businesses, that restaurants are seeing a forty, uh, forty-five to seventy-five percent reduction in their revenue source, uh, revenues right now. And hotels, um, we are assuming for April, May and June that we're only going to recover five percent of, uh, what we'd normally receive for that period of time. Uh, there are hotels that are closed altogether until January and some that are in very, very low occupancy rates with some, some, um, oddball exceptions.
Okay, thank you.
Um, actually, sorry, Dan, go back just one second. It's a good point that Kevin made. It's, it's also a really good reason why Prop thirteen has been so protective of a lot of cities because if all of the bars were in, um, were in boom and bust cycles, then, uh, sustained, I, I mean, cities couldn't possibly even consider weathering this storm. So it's, I mean, it's a good point. I give, i- in Newport at least, we've always been pretty consistent on property tax. You take, you take Prop thirteen away and then it's just flying up and down with the, uh, economy as well, so. Yeah, anyway, all right, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, property tax, uh, definitely adds, uh, an actual buffer, um, for, for our economy. Insulates us from these, these, uh, more radical swings that other cities see. So getting into nineteen twenty for the remainder of the year, just, um, really taking stock of, of March ended up for the most part pretty good, but April, May and June were expecting to be dismal. We were unsure how property taxes would, um, if we would see more delinquencies that didn't come to pass. So that reduction at eight seventy-seven may not come to pass. Um, but on the other hand, uh, sales tax and transient occupancy taxes may end up being worse than, than we assume. All in, we, we are preparing, as I said, not necessarily forecasting, but preparing for the possibility that we are, um, we're, our, our revenue will fall short, uh, by thirteen point five million dollars. Um, by the swift action of our city manager, she directed all departments to, uh, look in your departments and, um, with a lot of cooperation from the other departments, we were able to come up with thirteen point eight, uh, million dollars of cuts. And as you can see, the net sum difference is we shouldn't have to touch in, or touch our, uh, fifty-two million dollar contingency reserve, um, during the fiscal year nineteen twenty, um, uh, budget.
Uh, Dan, I'd just like to chime in for a second. When this happened, I know that many of us were concerned. I, I've got to commend Grace. I, I called her on the phone and this is all becoming real. And, um, she was incredibly aligned and, uh, moved quickly and understood the, the seriousness of this. And this is not typical, uh, in government. So I really want to thank our city manager and this is, um, you know, I think all the great education's really paying off Grace because, you know, this is, this is great what we have here. We're not, uh, we're going to avoid going into the reserves. Uh, this is not necessarily found money. It's going to be tougher, but it's great to see government be efficient. So I want to thank, uh, Grace and Dan very much and Will, members of the Finance Committee as well, for coming through this before it was brought to us. And I would like to say also that there is some extra money that I think we can look forward to coming in with some development deals that are trying to make their way through the city. It'll also help us meet, meet, uh, the Rena numbers and they're sort of out of the, the purview. They're, they're over by the airport area. So we are such a blessed city. Our staff is confident, competent, competent as well, but competence. And Grace, uh, your leadership, I think, has been really impressive to moving towards these sort of, um, measures. And these other cities, I'm, uh, you've got to really feel, feel sorry for them not to borrow money. They're going to have to go into their, uh, your, your reserves and they're going to have, uh, tough situations. But Newport Beach is going to be able to maintain the services, the public safety and, um, and the strong balance sheet. So I just wanted to take a minute to say thank you, Grace.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, moving on, um, getting, go ahead.
No, I just, I thought I saw Duffy's hand go up, but, um, I mean, no, never mind. No, no, we're good, sorry. Go ahead, Dan.
Okay, I've got this labeled wrong, but this should have been in fiscal year nineteen, uh, uh, two thousand twenty, twenty-one. So looking forward gets a lot more difficult, uh, because as I said, nobody really knows how this will unfold or what consumer behavior will be like. And so we're again preparing for revenue reductions of possibly, uh, thirty-two million, um, next year, but it indeed could be more. Every time we've looked at, we've tried to make comparisons to other events, and there really aren't many, um, that, that are comparable analogs, um, that, uh, it, it very well could be more. So we're on the expense side, we're again preparing for potentially even more than the thirty-one million, which is our current expected, uh, value. And we've enacted, um, again through Grace's leadership, um, the past departments, before we even get into next year's budget, or what we had started, to cut nearly three million dollars out of next year's budget, um, just on, um, operational, um, small operational items. And again, I want to thank the department heads for being so cooperative. Um, we've enacted a temporary hiring freeze and that should, uh, net at least, uh, nine hundred thousand. I'm optimistic that that number will grow because it is tough to bring a number of that many positions uh, back on board quickly. And plus we'll have new vacancies that we don't know about just yet, so, um, we'll see. But, uh, that is for non-safety personnel and Grace holds the reins on, uh, when anybody can hire. Now that deferred capital spend, uh, funding and spend, uh, this is something that Dave Webb will talk more in, in his side. Uh, but a lot of that is, is on the funding, on the, um, deferred funding of programs that we have in place. I'll come back to that a little bit more. The savings plan reductions have more to do with internal service funds that are healthy and where we think we can, we can back off. Um, and then we start saying, we start, well, you know, the next fifteen million, well, we're going to reassess, uh, probably quarterly. Grace would like us to come back in the fall, uh, to reassess. And, and then, um, you know, perhaps quarterly be looking to see how long is this going to be before we start, uh, cutting unnecessarily, so.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
There is, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to chime in if that's okay, Mr. Mayor. On item, uh, thank you. Item five and six was a pretty interesting to me. Ten million reserves as needed. I think a large part of that could be filled by development agreements. And then just item six, reduce discretionary pending funding. Just so that those who are tuning in and more people are watching on the usual, that's a dollar amount that we pay above and beyond our minimum annual payments. So that's not a five million dollar shortfall, if you will. That's a five million dollars extra that we don't have, that we'd like to give above and beyond our minimum requirements on a annual basis. Is that correct, Dan?
That is correct and, and we have the option to stop that at, um, during, during the year. So that is a trigger we may, uh, regretfully, uh, need to, to, to stop. Um, so, uh, that, that'll be one of the, one of the levers that Grace will be able to pull either mid-year. Um, and then of course, tier number seven, which would be additional service cuts. If you get even beyond that, we need to do, react more than, uh, we would evaluate, evaluate that. That would be our last choice.
Thank you, I just want this final point, I thank you for your patience. Those service level cuts, some of the basic necessities, those are paid for by our ability to open up cautiously. So I, I'm not advocating, uh, for businesses to, to reopen negligently, but, uh, with wise protocols in place, we can start to patron these businesses, return to a normal life. And, uh, it's the same problem for communities around us. We can level out and, uh, protect this economy. As you'll see right here, this is, this is obviously hopeful that things turn around, but, um, we can't just assume that we continue to stay in here because even if, uh, we start to reopen down the line, by then the economy could have drastic, um, repercussions and, uh, the market could fall. Consumer confidence could fail and unemployment numbers will continue to rise and not bounce back. And this is a good example where, um, whether it's law enforcement or fire or even some of the, the, the less essential. Uh, we, we are financially and economically, um, all of this together. It's in everyone's best interest, um, to be irrational and start to figure out what the plan looks like to successfully get the economy going again. And it's it's a false dichotomy to say it's economy over lives. The two are interconnected. We will have with more um business, we have more people who can feed their families, and we have services, and we have more order in society, and um it is good for everyone. So that's uh that's just something that I really want to show at the city level, at the city level, that you can see how it affects us as well. Thank you.
Good point.
Yeah, so real quick, um, sorry, go back for a second there. So if you want to see what all of this really looks like, go back and take a look at the finance committee PowerPoint presentation, which went in depth. But I'm just going to point out a couple of things for our council members. When we get to item number three, the deferred capital funding and spend, that's one thing that we'll need to take a look at um next next when we do the CIP. We're going to be pushing the next item. But the more we can save on that, um, the less we have to take out of contingency. Uh, and just a, it's important to kind of think that through when we're moving forward because just as a quick reminder, any, you know, any amount we pull out of contingency will eventually need to be um brought back uh into uh we will eventually be needing to be refilled essentially by a future council. So we are we're sort of borrowing from a future council if we use some of the contingency reserve. But again, I mean, if if we've said, this is this is one of those moments where you're using contingency reserve makes a whole lot of sense. And then the um discretionary pension funding, um, you know, as unless the market takes some kind of crazy rebound, um, which I don't think anyone anticipates happening, we're going to be hit getting hit pretty hard with uh an unfunded pension liability that we know is coming two years down the road. And so the amount of money that we can spend, we can put toward that now is going to save a lot of interest. So we're essentially, that's that's five million, but it's five million at seven percent interest. And it's um it's kind of one of the reasons why we ultimately chose not to do a one fifteen plan, et cetera, et cetera. Um, but that's that's just kind of pointing out, that's why they come, why why contingency reserve is first. It costs a whole lot less to take from that than it does to remove money that we're using toward unfunded pension liabilities. So it's just worth pointing out, uh, the more we can save this year, the less we have to pull out of um either the pension funding or contingency reserve or frankly, God forbid, service level cuts, because that would mean that we actually are down more than thirty nine million dollars up here if we have to get into number seven. So anyway, while our city manager is planning on this, it's important. That's why that's why the next meeting, when we talk CIP, pay attention to pay attention to that because it's the overall structure issue too. All right, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, good, good point. And, you know, one one additional point on a contingency reserve, uh, are holding that in our portfolio, as you probably have seen, the treasury notes, especially the two-year treasury notes, which best represents our investment portfolio, is down to about twenty basis points. And as you uh pointed out, we accrue interest on our pension liability at seven percent a year. So two tenths of 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 one percent um on on the contingency reserve versus uh seven full percentage points on the 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 pension. Okay, so so this is um, I know in finance committee, we we struggled a little bit to show the relationship between the general fund and how it funds um all other all other capital master plans. And if you add up, all of the inner circle represents contributions to these uh master plans, and they they approximate about twenty million a year that we, not just the five million in nuts and bolts CIPs, but eight and a half million to the facilities financial plan, four and a half million to the harbor and beaches master plan, um, to the facilities uh maintenance master plan. It's another one and a half million. And occasionally um or when we have surpluses, we we do send money to a neighborhood enhancement fund. And the outer amounts are the amount that's already banked. So we think um by uh reducing, deferring the funding on several of these master plans, we can buy ourselves some time by not making those contributions and yet rely on some significant balances that we we have um still in these mass in in these master plans. Now, before I leave uh these two slides, do you have any questions?
You're going.
Okay, so all in, the reduced capital uh funding results in about that sixteen point nine million of deferred capital uh funding. Now, that's the amount that we have saved. It doesn't necessarily mean on the spend side, and Dave Webb will be talking about, okay, well, which ones do we want to, you know, potentially defer for a year? Or, you know, um, but that that's for uh council discussion. So when we get into grant funding, I'm going to turn it over to Grace, um, our our city manager, to talk about grant funding. Grace, we can't hear you if you're talking, so that might be on mute.
Counsel, we we think um Webex might have dropped again.
Yeah, I just talked, I just saw Grace. She's she's not able to communicate. Uh, she's not online right now. Maybe she can use my office. I'll I'll talk to her real quick. He's right here.
Okay, I'm I'm right here. Sorry about that. Um, all right, so um we wanted to um, this is a little bit of segue into the next fiscal year, actually. We wanted to get a little bit of direction. Um, we have grant funding programs um pu- um put into the budget annually. And typically, we actually start the process um a few months before the new fiscal year starts. So I wanted to be able to get a little direction, given that um with the current, um, excuse me, I just ran over. From the um, um, given the uh current um pandemic and with our fiscal situation, to see if there's any adjustments that would potentially um council would be interested in doing in these programs. So you can see at a high level, uh, we have these four main programs. Um, and I'll go into a little more detail on each of these um uh program areas. Okay, so the community and human service grants uh for uh various nonprofit and organizations within the city. You can see um we've been budgeting eighty thousand. This current um fiscal year, we actually, the allocation that council did was sixty seven thousand. Um, so that is um less than the total budgeted amount here. Um, you'll just note right here, there's a highlight on the SOS program. They had a change in their organization, so they ended up um being unable to use the funds for what they originally applied for and didn't apply again um with a a different type of um uh service there. So that remains unspent and um and um unallocated um for them. Um, special event support, this this is where we provide fee waivers um for uh special events that occur within the city. Um, and this one really particularly got hit uh this year with um with the pandemic response and the stay-at-home orders. So all of these highlighted um lines here will show you the the ones that the events were either canceled or postponed. And here again, while the total budget was sixty thousand, what was actually allocated was just under that, about fifty six, uh fifty seven thousand there. And um just with the particular hit on the events, um, there is about twenty, almost twenty eight thousand um that were postponed or canceled. Um, and then um finally, our cultural um cultural arts grants um that do get vetted through our arts commission and then get approved by uh city council. And here, um, you can see the total budget annually. Um, in this current year, we have forty thousand, and thirty one thousand was approved by uh city council. Um, and finally, we have signature events. Um, the these um funds were all allocated. Um, two events have been postponed um or canceled. The uh the yacht race actually will not um did not go on this fiscal year. It will happen in the in the next year. Um, so that would actually be a savings in um in funding, um, since they have received the funds for an event that didn't occur this this current year. Um, and then the Newport Beach Film Festival um was supposed to go on in April. They are currently planning on uh an August event and then hoping to catch up and do an event next April. I will also note for the film fest and the um the boat parade, um, we have contractual obligations for those, um, where we have a couple more years on each one of making payments there on those events. Um, so those are the um four areas. I'm just gonna go back just to give you that summary again, where um I am looking for some direction um from city council to see if they would, if you would all like to continue at the budgeted um fund level here um on these um programs or or um if there's some adjustments you'd like to make because we are um right now holding off on moving forward on doing the application process right now um till I uh got a little more direction from you. And I think that's it for our presentation.
One more.
Oh, next steps, oh, um, oh, yeah, just real briefly, um, we are bringing, we are working now um on putting this budget together for the um for the review, first by the finance committee and then by the city council um in May. Um, we will now be bringing the uh the CIP, um, taking a look at the current year's CIP um um per direction from the council. Um, so we'll bring that back for the next meeting. That will inform our CIP discussion um and then coming back um in June for budget adoption. That is the end. Thank you.
All right. So um Grace, could you go back to the, maybe we we go back to the slide and where she's trying to, yeah, where she's seeking direction on.
Oh, yes.
Our.
Yep.
There you go.
There we go.
Okay, so maybe go forward. I might, I think my recommendation would be on this to drop it by twenty thousand. Um, I mean, I I think at this point, we've got to um got to take a big stock of and be cutting everywhere we can, at least a little bit.
Uh, Will, uh, Mr. Mayor, I agree with you. I think we could do it at Malibu Island Association, it's sort of our society, the struggle society. It's sort of connected to um retail. If retail bounces back, that could be quickly changed, but that's a large ticket item.
Yeah, so I think I so I I understand what you're saying. I think what we're, I think what we're trying to do right now is just figure out what the allocation, what what the total amount we're going to approve would be. And then um, so for example, if we, right now, it's budgeted eighty. So if we budgeted down to sixty, that that tells people, you know, they're competing for sixty instead of a a s- a slice of sixty instead of eighty. And then who knows what we end up with in terms of who we grant these to. But I guess I'm just saying, in an overall allocation, I think it makes sense to start cutting down just about everything, so. I would just.
Okay, so, yeah, so finance committee has a better grasp on this. So this is the overall budget for allocations in the next fiscal year.
Right, yeah, so we we wouldn't actually be deciding tonight who gets what. Yeah, so we're just, we're just saying, um, for next fiscal year, we're we're proposing a certain amount of money be allocated toward this so that when they're going out for grant, when people are applying for grant funding, it's a pool of money instead of eighty, we say the pool is sixty.
Mm hmm, very good.
Any other thoughts on that one?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
My picture is no longer there. Yeah, I was just going to emphasize what you just said. So we're just, because of the process of application, so the allocation of the budget that we would not approve tonight, but that we're giving Grace direction. So for example, to cut it by twenty, is that what you said, to reduce it by twenty?
Yeah.
Well, I support that. Uh, so they plug in thirty two, is that what you're saying?
No, so the total budget, so when we when we budgeted this last year, we budgeted eighty. And so what I'm just, budgeted sixty, and then um when people apply in, we'll be allocating sixty instead of eighty.
All right, so you want to go th- twenty less than what we allocated or what we spent?
No, the allocated. So we spent fifty two, so um that's savings that'll roll into next year. But I'm suggesting for next year, we don't even, we're, we don't even set aside eighty, you know, we don't.
I agree with that. I'm just saying, based on what we spent this year, maybe we just hold it flat. That's just another way to look at it, just hold it flat with what we, the actual. But um, either way, I agree with some slight reduction.
Okay, well, so um, uh, Aaron is reminding me that it's probably a good idea for me to get a, if I'm gonna, we're gonna have specific number recommendations, I should just kind of do straw polls. So if I if I proposed, we go down to at least six, if we go down to sixty on the total budget, um, I'll tell you what, if you agree with me, just put your hand up.
Well, Will, can you not see me? Because I've been waving my hand.
You know what? I'm sorry. Now I can. I apologize, Joy.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Uh, could I say something?
Of course.
I have a, I have a question about this. So um are are we, I mean, community and human services seems to me that this might be something that we really need to look at more carefully for this coming year, considering the fact that our community is is suffering. And I'm just wondering if, is is this something that we have to decide right now? Or can we look at, um, I mean, it may be other things than this that we it just doesn't seem like this is the area that we need to be cutting in.
Yeah, so.
I'm concerned about that.
Uh, that's, that's fair. Let me, let me kind of explain why it makes sense to do this now and then. And that is because when we're budgeting, um, we're, so when when we budget this, uh, you can always amend the budget next year. So for example, if, so we we had um a budget, a total budget of eighty thousand. We approved sixty seven thousand last year, which meant that there was a, there was a delta remaining. But we actually only ended up spending fifty two. So that that twenty eight ended up rolling into the next year's budget essentially because it was unallocated amounts of money that um uh wasn't spent, but budgeted for. So what I'm suggesting is, we budgeted sixty. And what that does is it frees up twenty thousand dollars. And that, this is true for across the board. So I mean, you know, we are talking about a uh two hundred million dollar budget. We're talking about twenty thousand. But the reason I'm I'm saying this is because that money eventually adds up. And so in the twenty thousand dollars that we're talking about right now, if we reduce that, then Grace can use that twenty thousand somewhere else if she needed to um plug a hole or something like that in the budget. But if if, when we get the grant funding, and this is to your point, uh, Joy, if when we get the grant funding requests in, if we look at it and we say, man, there are some really important organizations that need a help right now, and we ought to provide an extra twenty thousand, we can make a budget amendment and, you know, and do that. So so we're not prohibited from amending our budget uh to go up or down. But I'm just pointing this out because when we're, when we're working this through at the at the budget level, I think it makes sense for us to reduce down now and then see how it goes as we go back and go into next fiscal year.
Okay, so there will be opportunities, yes, so there will be opportunities in the future for us to consider if there's special needs.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Okay, I'll just, can I just clarify something also? And my understanding is that the budget is whatever we are recommending now, if it is going to be sixty, these um organizations may not apply or different ones may apply. That it's just a number, it's not the organizations we are approving. It's simply just the budget out, budget number that we're plugging into the new budget. Is that correct? We could, because it's going to go open for grant applications, and we'll see what comes in. And I'm sure it's to your point, Joy, we're going to get a deluge. Right, okay.
Uh, that's probably true. Um, so anyway, my 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 suggestion is, at least for budgeting purposes, we bring it down to sixty. Um, I'm, I can't see Kevin, so I'm gonna have to roll call that. But uh for now, just if you're, if you agree on it as a straw poll basis, just put your hand up for it. Okay, all right, there you go. Okay, unanimous. I can see him. All right, uh, let's go to the next slide. Total budgeted allocation of sixty, we ended up.
Mr. Mayor? I didn't see the hand vote, if you could let me know.
It was unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Um, so then on this, the, so our special event support, these. So then, on this, so our special event support, these are, these are, this is event waivers. I've, I never really understood why we have to, I don't completely understand the, I guess it's a reduction in revenue, isn't it? Never mind then.
It is, yeah.
Never mind. So the total budget is sixty, we ended up actually spending thirty because so many events got postponed and canceled this year. I would, frankly, given the number of things we probably anticipate getting canceled in the coming year, I think we could pretty safely go down to forty five and change this if we needed to. Any discussion? All right, if you agree, just put your hand up for me. All right, next slide.
Again, Mayor, I couldn't see the vote, thank you.
Sorry, it is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Cultural arts grant, total budget was forty.
What's the source of funds for this?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a lot, why, Dan, what's the yellow on the two?
These two have received their allocation, but their events have been postponed. Yeah.
I mean, I would just suggest going down ten on this one then, from forty to thirty.
Yeah, and this is a general fund, I think I heard somebody ask a question of what funding for.
Any discussion on this? All right, let's straw poll. All right, that was Duffy, you agree? Yeah, all right, that was unanimous, Leilani, next one.
Thank you.
So this one's, this one's challenging because Film Festival and Boat Parade both have contracts with us.
These are significant events.
Yeah, you know what? I don't see a situation where we have the ability to reduce this one.
I don't either.
We can roll the money over essentially.
Yeah, that's exactly what's going to happen. Yeah, I, I, we, we can't, I mean, the largest, I mean, it's two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand are contract already. Let's keep this one. All right, discussion. All right, I need to straw poll, anyone, if you agree, hand up. Duffy? There's a, it's a contract, Duffy, all right, unanimous also, Leilani. All right, any other discussion on this item? All right, any public comment? Just give me a second, IT will tell me.
Yeah, Jim's coming to the podium, I can see him right up here.
Okay, great, thanks for letting me know. All right, we'll go first to Jim Moser.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neil, I had comments about this. First, regarding the grant funding for next year. Not mentioned was the council discretionary grants, for each council member on their own can give away six thousand dollars. Would you consider eliminating that next year? Those decisions would be made publicly by the council rather than privately by council members. Sounds like that would not be painful, move that. And then the second comment about the earlier slide where we saw the property tax, rent occupancy tax, sales tax, and the volatility of the TOT. The TOT is both a revenue and an expense, because a certain fraction of that, I think it's eighteen percent, were committed as at Newport Beach. Might be slightly off topic, I'm wondering what direction we're giving as at Newport Beach with that expense or revenue money that we're giving to them? Are we continuing to tell them to market Newport Beach aggressively as a tourist destination? Seems kind of counter to our coronavirus program. I want them to hold off on that for a little bit, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have no phone calls on this item, so I, this is our receiving file, so we will go to.
It's approval of the budget amendment.
I apologize. Right, I'll move, I'll move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Second about Mr. Muldoon, any discussion? All right, I need a poll, Mr. Hurdman? Mr. Muldoon? Ms. Dixon? Sorry, you're on mute.
Aye.
All right, Ms. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Duffield? All right, it's an aye. We can see it. Mr. Avery?
Aye.
All right, and I'm an aye as well. Okay, we're going to be continuing item fourteen, do I have to make a formal motion, Aaron?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'm opening up item fourteen, I make a motion to continue, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I second by Mr. Muldoon. Do we have any public comment on the continuance?
I see none from here.
All right, and that means we have none. All right, there you go, Mr. Hurdman?
Aye.
All right, I should have probably mentioned, Aaron, it's the next meeting. Sorry, okay, Mr. Hurdman?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Muldoon?
Right before the eleven o'clock waiver, aye.
It's close. Sorry, Ms. Dixon?
Aye.
Ms. Brenner? Give me a thumbs up. Mr. Avery?
Aye.
All right, and I'm an aye as well. I think we've had a lot of coronavirus updates today, so does anyone really want this one?
No.
No.
All right, hey, look, here's the deal, we, we in theory have continued our process into the end of the meeting. I'm going to suggest that we continue that one to the next meeting as well.
Please.
I second that, I second that.
God bless you.
All right, so do we need to make a motion on this one? No, I'll just put on the next agenda, thank you. All right, hey, everybody, just want to tell you, I love you.
Well, good job, Will.
Really good job.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Motion for reconsideration, any?
I apologize, go ahead.
Are there any?
Gosh, no, there are none.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Adjourn before eleven, thank you.